We will dispense with the pledge of allegiance. Does anyone see a flag here? No, okay. Okay, let's hear roll call, roll call. John Willie here. Darcy Paul.
Here.
Vice Mayor Chow. Councilman Sings.
Here.
Okay, Ryan here.
May I make a very brief announcement? For council members, you need to speak into the microphone if you're speaking. You need to share them. We are recording it, and that's the only way that you'll be heard. Thank you.
This microphone doesn't work though, so I'll have to pass this one around. First on the agenda is oral communications. If you wish to speak, fill out a blue card. If you're speaking about the library and need to go to the other meeting in Campbell, we will put you first. You have three minutes. I guess I will find a timer. The first speaker is Kitty Moore. Welcome Kitty, followed by Naidu Malaniri, followed by Chin Penn.
Good morning. Just want to add something to the topic list. Can you give a quote from your Cupertino community library? "The positive response we receive from the community is only outweighed by patrons' repeated requests that we do more programming. So often the reason we do not is that we simply do not have the space." So I am here in support of adding the Cupertino library program. Thank you.
Thank you Kitty. Thank you for being so brave. Next, Naidu Malaniri. Malaniri.
Thank you very much. Again, this is about the library program room that we really need. And as I was checking with one of my friends who is giving a presentation about some technology in a couple of weeks in our community hall. And he said, well, this is supposed to actually happen in October, but I got to know that there is actually some legal issues going on with the community hall. And that really speaks basically that we really need a dedicated program room that can accommodate people and continue to have these programs so that it can be lively coming in. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Chin Penn, followed by Kristen Lynn.
So I'm Chin Penn here and speaking myself. And I just, I recently got a little photographer and looked at the pictures. I just, in a Sunday afternoon randomly, I stopped by the library and how I took those pictures. You can see every single seat I took. Actually, I regret, I didn't take one picture for the kids actually studying in the stairways that suggested they are studying. So we need more space in the library, hopefully, you know, for the kids to study and add a conference or a program room, whatever called it, accommodate what more residents need. Thank you.
Oh, thank you. I was informed, just to make it clear, when we start doing our list of items, it will be also an opportunity to put things on that list. Okay, next is Kristen Lynn, followed by Kiran Varshaniya.
Good morning, council member. My name is Kristen Lynn. I'm here to support the library expansion. As a former school member, I really know Cupertino is focused on education. Our citizen is a lifetime learner and really want to enrich our youth for all kinds of educational program. Since library is our Cupertino hub, and I'm the founder, I want to show some numbers for you guys. In the current county, Cupertino is about 8% population, but we have a 20% library visit. And based on the circulation, we are 3.5 times compared to county average and 6 times compared to state average. Based on the visit per open hours, we are 3.5 times compared to state average. Cupertino love library. Currently, library program is outside library majority program is all over the place such like community hall, senior center, Quinlan Center, and so on and so forth. It's not centralized and sometimes create a confusion for the citizen. And it's not easy for the library to outreach citizens. So once we have the centralized library program room, definitely we can reach out more citizens and more citizens will benefit from the library program. I believe a Cupertino citizen and a youth deserve to have library program rooms just like Los Angeles, Saratoga, and Mifflin. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next is Kiran Varshaniya, followed by Gopal Kumara, followed by Art Cohen.
Good morning, everyone. Good morning, council members. Thank you for this opportunity. I'm with the Cupertino Library Foundation, and I'd like to share some of the programming that we are doing. Last year, from 2018, we had 700 different programs run through the library. On an average, we have one hour of two every Cupertino resident that's attended. So we do 600 programs in the library facility itself. We do hundreds of them using the community hall. So the total attendance is close to 36,000 over our programs. The programs cover all the needs of our demographics going, let's look at the age, so going from our elementary, middle school to high school students. We are now actually increasing our programming for adults and seniors. Just to give you an example, last year we kicked off the Health and Wellness series, supporting the needs of our community, and that's been super successful. We're expanding that this year, in fact, we did the first session in January on Alzheimer's, which we all know is how prevalent in our community and needs to be supported. Losses on the other ones for our cardiac health, pain management. What we want to do this year is Health and Wellness Plus. What does that mean? We want to have the information session along with workshops. So the space that we have today is either we can use the community hall, which is more auditorium style, or we have very small space of about 10 to 15 participants that we can use inside the library. What we're looking for a combined larger space in which we can do the educational, informational, and sometimes even cultural events. I myself do the Diwali program, but it's a combination of what we are trying to bring in terms of education and our cultural programming, which is now again split between community hall and the library rooms. But there are certain programs we'd like to do where we need a larger space. We want to be able to own that space so we can do rehearsals, we can do the presentations, we can do the workshops at the same time. So I'm here to support the expansion of the Cupertino library to such a program room that can meet the needs of our community for education, for entertainment, but also now for health and wellness. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Gopal, followed by Art Cohen.
Good morning, council owners and city staff here. I'm speaking for myself, and I'm an active user and a participant and beneficiary of the Cupertino library for so many years, I would say like 18 years. And as a preschool teacher in part-time, when I teach kids and when I talk to them, the only source of other legacies they go is to the library. And I, as I said, 17 years I teach those preschool kids, and they all grown from all of us. And everybody is so proud of library. And being watched with the statistics like the previous speaker spoke, we are nation's number one in many, many ways. If you look at the cost-benefit analysis, look at it into the written on inverse, when you put it there, the benefits, we are off the chart. You can wrap up anything. We are, I'm here so proud to say that that's a home away from home kind of thing for me library, because it's such a powerful place where you get all the knowledge. But in spite of being the nation's number one and with the cost-benefit analysis with the superb rate of return, whatever the inverse we put in there, we are still want to, we are shutting off some programs because in wanting of spaces, we couldn't connect programs. There is, it's a supply and demand gap. People look for a lot of programs, and we have to shut it down because, sorry, we cannot accommodate. We are just getting other people. So even I myself protect a lot of programs, especially coaching college, maybe the high school kids for the college. I go to San Jose Kings Library, it's an awesome program room, they have a chip. I go to Milletas where I do technical programs because it accommodates at least 200 plus parents with their kids. I cannot do it on my own city, so which is, which is really, really bothering. So definitely me bought a program room is a must. I think it should not be a question. And we had it approved. We worked on it, and the council uploaded 2015 specific plan. We did a lot of groundwork, and it was just now waiting for putting into the plan and getting into execution. So I really want to make sure that we, as citizens here, are more appetitive for the program and to get educated. That's what we strive for. Cupertino is very, very known for those. And unfortunately, we are not able to serve it and not able to service those needs simply because of wanting a program room. It looks so obvious when I talk to people on outside, in other cities, everybody has a program room. We said, oh, that looks odd. I said, no, it's not odd, but some of we have problems in doing. So I really like was to feed it to the appetite of the kids, parents, and teachers and the rest of them to help initiate a program.
Please finish up.
Thank you.
Next is Art Cohen, and that's the last part of libraries that I have. Art Cohen here. Well, I guess, Art, someone filled out a card for him, and he's not here. Bear in mind, everyone can fill out a blue card if you want to speak during oral communications. Next is Samir Rahija, followed by Rambo Paul.
Hi, I'm Samir Rahija. Thank you for giving us the opportunity to speak at your oral communication. I'm here to represent the passionate dog owners of Cupertino, specifically dog owners who frequent Jollyman Park. I want to give a little bit of history of our ask. In January of 2018, we went to the Parking Reg Commission to request a trial of an off-leash dog area in Jollyman Park. In February, we formally presented to the Parking Reg Commission. And in the month of January, we canvassed our neighbors and got over 800 signatures of residents of Cupertino who supported this initiative. The Parking Reg Commission recommended that the city do a survey, which was conducted in June and July. There were 139 respondents, 75% of whom lived within one mile of the park, and 75% of whom supported an off-leash trial in Jollyman Park. In October, the Parking Reg Director, Jeff Milks, presented to the Parking Reg Committee, and the Parking Reg Committee unanimously approved a recommendation that the city council change the code to allow for an off-leash dog trial in the park. So we would like to ask that in your role planning, in your role setting, you consider our ask. We would also like to ask that this formally be put on a future agenda so we can discuss this with the council. We have a presentation we would like to make. We have many passionate dog owners who are, who get together and socialize, and things have changed in the past few years in terms of how communities see dog parks. Mountain View has eight off-leash unfenced dog areas. And the city of Cupertino has hired a park director who came from Portland, who transitioned that city to 33 off-leash dog areas in their city parks, 24 of which are uninfected. So we'd like to propose a trial and a request to be on the agenda for future items. And we'd also like to ask that you consider your planning. A number of our members have reached out to you visually, and we really look forward to hearing back from you. Thank you.
Thank you. Deepa, sorry, Rambo Paul, followed by Deepa.
Yeah, Rambo's like, um, shot here, I do. Mark.
You're, you're.
My name is Deepa.
Oh, what happened to Rambo Paul?
Uh, Rambo's my daughter.
Okay, great, okay.
Is that okay?
Yeah, go.
All right, thank you so much. All right. Thanks, thank you for the opportunity to speak. I've been a resident of Cupertino since 2002. I've mostly been happy with the way the city has run. I mean, just not given enough attention to my civic responsibilities and kind of just been focused on my life and stuff like that. In 2015, I became a dog owner for various reasons. Number one, an attempted burglary was happening on my home when I was present with a little baby inside the house, pretty scary. I called nine one one.
The sheriff's first recommendation was that we get a dog. And that continues to be the sheriff's and the security folks' first recommendation for most Cupertino dog owners. We are two working parents, which is probably the majority for Cupertino, which required that my middle schooler, a 12-year-old, has to be at home by himself alone after school for a few hours. A dog to keep him company seemed ideal, so we just got, made a lot of sense to get the dog about that time. Our own passion and love for animals, having grown up with pets, made us get a dog. After getting a dog, my Cupertino social circle expanded from about five families to a 50-plus families. All thanks to the informal circle of dog parents and dog lovers who we met with either during our walks or during an informal evening gatherings in the Jollyman Park. Our dogs ask very little of us, and they give us a lot. They give, they give the community a lot, they give us a lot. They help improve security morale, and they help reduce stress. Now, stress is something that is prevalent in Bay Area. And, and, not to, not to say our kids love that, it's just so much more better for the community to have dogs along with us. But they need an opportunity to play with each other and exercise. For the roughly 11,000-plus dogs in Cupertino, there is only one small, about 7,500 square foot enclosed park. 11,000 dogs. Our ask at this point is very reasonable. And as Samir spoke, we've done extensive petitioning and followed all the right steps to get our request approved. We are very disappointed with the result after one year of hard work. Our request for time-based off-leash play area for dogs is not without precedent. It's not without precedent. Mountain View has eight such parks. Portland has 33 such parks. There are cities in Bay Area and all over the country that are adopting these programs. And we have found statistically, there is no increase in security incidents because of such programs. No increase in dog-related security incidents. So statistically, it's proven to be reasonably safe to take up. We request that we share these details with you formally in a city council meeting, so please put us on, on the agenda. We have a 20-minute presentation we would like to share and, and share our passion. Thank you for listening to the community voice, and I hope to get on the agenda and speak. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next, we have, I'm sure I'm gonna not pronounce, Dabashish, followed by Charles Hansen.
Hi, good morning, everyone. My name is Dabashish. I have been a Cupertino resident for the last 13 years. Jollyman Park has been my community hub. I mean, my kids grew up around that area, and we live a block away. Now, now our kids have grown up, and we got a dog three years back, and that's part of my life right now. I mean, we are, my wife works, I work. Now, the challenge that we face is, I mean, we live a block away from a community park, and we don't have access to a play area where my dog can enjoy the outdoors. I mean, yeah, we take them, take him for walks, that's fine. But I mean, dogs need something more than just a walk. They need to mingle with other dogs and run around, fetch balls, right? Now, that's not available in Cupertino. As Deepa mentioned and Samir mentioned, I mean, we have to drive to the dog park in Matilda, which is inconvenient for us, like since we both working, we have busy lives, we come home, and we have to take, drive the car to take our dogs there to play. Now, why can't we have a dog park, an off-leash dog park in Jollyman? I mean, it's not unreasonable. We have seen these programs work in other cities. And I have taken my dog to Mountain View too. I mean, there are well-behaved dogs, there are well-behaved people, there are rules to follow, people follow them. So all I request is, I mean, we have petitioned the city in the past to get this off-leash dog park trial started. We haven't seen any positive outcome to that. Now, my humble request to all of you here is to listen to our petition again and get us on the agenda so that we can present you the facts. And Cupertino is a progressive city. I mean, I don't see why we cannot consider new ideas, like how other cities have followed, and if there's an expectation of, of the people, of the dog lovers and the dog owners to follow a certain, a certain set of rules. I mean, there's a, we will cooperate. I mean, there are people out there who want to see their dogs enjoy the outdoors, and having this right set of expectations and set of rules, we can make this work. So I would really like the council to have us on the agenda and hear what we have to say. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next is Charles Hansen, followed by Rajiv C.
Thank you. I noticed the title of this is prioritizing our city agenda, and you got like 25 items on here to prioritize, A, B, C. I'd like to be called D, D for dogs. Okay? I've lived next door to Jollyman Park. I'm an original owner there, so it's over 40 years. We've always had dogs. I've, I've used that area when it was still a school, Jollyman School. And I've been going there daily, met many, many friends through many, many dogs. And all these years, only once have been, have I been spoken to. And that was by 2:00 in the afternoon, I was playing frisbee with my dog, and Animal Control out of San Jose came by and chatted with me and said, and he saw that I had my dog under control, and there was no one else in the park. So he said, you can't do that. I said, okay, thanks. So we hooked up and went home, and that was the end of that. It is a very important social outlet for us and for the dogs. For the dogs not to be tethered to a leash, this is an important part of their development, is their socialization. My last dog died two years ago, but since then, I've been going practically every day to the park to meet with my friends and to get my dog fixed. So I don't have a dog, and I can't because of our life circumstances at home, but I go there to play with their dogs. And, and I've got to meet the people, and it's a lot of fun. So all we're doing is we don't want to get arrested, okay? We've, we've been harassed in the past by an overzealous code enforcement guy, and it just shut us down for about two or three weeks until it settled out, and then it started up and dabbled out. But we're always looking over our shoulder, because we are against the regulations and no reason for it. You know, it's six, 5, 6 o'clock in the afternoon, we're down in the left field of the ballgame, it's 11 acre park, everybody else is on the other 10 acres, 10 and a half acres, and we're just using the left field. So it makes sense. What we'd like to do is get on the agenda so that we can make a, sorry, so that we can get a trial. All we're asking for is like a six-month trial period so that we can have, be official. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next, we have Rajiv C., followed by Danessa Tekmansky.
Hi, good morning, everyone. My ask is very simple. We want to be on the goal setting and also be able to present to the city council what our feeling is. At the end of the day, all we are asking is leave and let live. Now, we are not asking that the whole park be dedicated to the dogs all the time. We are asking only for two hours each day, which is not a big ask, which is a reasonable one. I can tell you my own personal story, right? My, my daughter was a rebel in the family, and some people advised, just like the sheriff advised to the Deepa, get a dog. So we got a dog for her, and then ever since, we have seen a lot of behavioral improvement in her. And second thing is, you know, these days, it's very hard for us to keep the kids out of the social media sites. We tell them, go play outside, go take the dog to the park. Their biggest complaint is, hey, we can't go to the park. The reason is, you know, there is a sheriff, there is a dog enforcement guys who come and ask us to leave, give tickets, whatnot. So you, city, the, the former council members and the former staff members, in their infinite wisdom, have built a dog park close to 85. I strongly urge you guys to go and take a look, how many people really use that park, right? My kids have no patience in city politics, don't get involved in city politics, don't want to talk about politics. Whenever I tell them, hey, let's go to the dog park at 85, there's a dedicated dog park. They said, Dad, you can go by yourself, we will sit here and sit in front of the computer and play games. So all I, we ask is leave and let leave, you know, allow us to use the park for two hours. We have not caused any trouble to anyone. It's pretty safe place for dogs to play around and also for the adults to, you know, have a conversation. And more importantly, Samir and others talked about socialization for adults. I see this also a, a great place for the kids to socialize. When my dog comes to the park with the dog, five, five of our friends follow her to play around there, which is a, which is a real, real nice sight to see, you know, how the kids play around with the dogs and how they want to bond together. With that, I repeat my ask, we want to be on the go, part of the goal setting, and we want to be, be part of the agenda on the city council where we want to come and present these things. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Well, can you fill out a card? Oh, what is your name? I'm sorry. Okay. Well, I, I still have more cards, but I, were you here the whole time?
Yeah.
What was your name again?
Samir, I say F D.
Samir. Oh, yeah, one second, let me see if. Oh, oh, so you're commenting on an item on the. Right, just look for his card, okay? Samir. Yeah, yeah, we'll look for your card, and if not, you can still speak, don't worry, everyone, everyone will be able to speak. Yeah, go ahead and speak and then fill out a card afterwards, that's fine.
Okay, thank you. Thanks. I didn't want to interrupt, but as my friend said, there are agendas, different agendas, A, B, C, D. So I'm calling for C. C is for children and C for cricket. And our request is, basically in today's world, we have our community, Cupertino stands for education and provides the best place for kids to grow up. And we have a competitive schools, but to, to have the best overall growth for the children is important that we have available sporting facilities as well as education. Sports and education go hand in hand. And our request is, there are quite a few, more than 100 kids here in Cupertino who have been going at different national, international level, and they are looking for a space where they can come and play. Cricket to be, I'm not sure how many people are aware, but it is excellent game, which helps in developing social skills, helping people to come together, have team skills, excellent sports for hand-eye coordination, build up stamina. And it's a team sport, that basically means you can have about 25 to 30 kids comes on one place and they can play. At this point in time, what's happening is, and I want to get your attention, is we are not getting a time on, usually on Sundays, where we need a time about five to six hours that kids can come out, because cricket is a sport which takes about six to seven hours to complete. And we get very limited time. With about 100 kids, it's very difficult to accommodate these kids to come and, and play. They come sometime on Saturday, and they can, like only 25 kids can play. And usually, the kids have to stay home, and they are glued to TVs, iPhones, and different electronic gadgets, they don't want to, they cannot come out. If you get an opportunity, if you can come on, on a Sunday and also play, then it will allow another people to come much, much more regularly to this grounds and play. It would definitely help them in their overall growth and development, and also give a chance for a city to groom up the career for these kids who can go and represent these kids at national, international level. This is, this is, this is a request that we have, we have been asking the, the council for quite some time, and with. some time, and with, we lose a lot of time during the year, during like rains and all, we don't get time where we cannot play sports. So there were very limited time, and my request is, if we can allow these kids to start at least playing as soon as possible, so that will, that will allow them to come and on the ground and start playing. We can look for a long-term solution, look at different options, as well as if we can allow different grounds as well to develop facilities for cricket in different areas. But my request is, again, to the city council is, please look into this, and there are kids who are eagerly waiting for your decision so that they can come and start playing on this. Thank you, I don't have much to say, but thanks for your time.
Okay, thank you. I did find your cards, you don't have to fill out another one, okay? Next, Danessa Tekmansky, followed by Lisa Warren.
Good morning. My name is Danessa Tekmansky. I actually had two items. I think the other one on Parkland probably falls under agenda item number two for general plan zoning. I wanted to talk about having tighter terms, term limits on housing elements. Is that okay to speak on now?
Go.
Yeah, okay. So right now, we have about 1,400 entitled housing units, not including Valco, that are just sitting there. And my concern is, over lengthy terms for housing entitlements allow developers to use their properties like safety deposit boxes, and sitting on entitlement should not be vehicles to hedge the market, or avoid recessions, or increase resale value by waiting for housing bills that will further increase their allowed density. So while the city is waiting for developers to pull permits, it leaves us vulnerable to buy right housing bills for not having met our quotas. More people are left without housing in the interim, and some developers may be delaying building precisely because they're waiting for housing bills to increase their property values, and yet the city has absolutely no way to capture that added value unless a property is sold. I don't know if any of you have read the recent studies on Chicago and quite a few others that are showing that upzoned property values actually increase the values of the property regardless of whether the housing is even built. And it also, those increases also translate to adjacent properties despite they have no physical changes. That's a big deal. So the end result of letting developers have more discretion on when they build, once they've been given entitlements, is that, you know, our housing isn't being built now when we need it, and those increased prices by waiting for higher density via the housing bills means that more low-income workers will actually be pushed out of Cupertino. So I wish we could tighten up those time limits. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Next is Lisa Warren, followed by Rhoda Frye.
Good morning. I just want to give a heads up for...
Speak into the microphone, please.
Okay. A heads up for something coming up Monday that's important to the city and the region, in my opinion. For years now, there's been discussion, chatter about demolishing Flint Center and the associated parking garage, I believe. There's never been a decision to do so, but it keeps popping up, and it's once again on the Foothill DeAnza Community College Board agenda on Monday night at Foothill College.
I have both of them.
The chancellor is asking for the trustees to consider demolition again without a real plan for what would take its place. So please, community, if you're listening and you're interested in Flint Center, try to show up Monday night. It's at Foothill College. I believe it's at 6:00, maybe 6:30, but I'm pretty sure it's 6:00. Why is that important here? It's important because DeAnza College is a huge part of this community, both regionally and the city itself, and part of that is Flint Center. And I want to urge the council to get a grasp of what's going on and give input as to their thoughts of what may be coming down the line for Flint Center. And I want to also caution, it's very important to understand that a 2, a 2,300-seat Flint Center is not comparable to a smaller community theater. If, if anyone wants to argue, "Well, if we're getting our own performing arts center, why do we need Flint?" They're entirely different animals. Paula Davis, who runs Flint Center and has so for, I believe, 25 years, spoke to council in September urging you to understand that a community performing arts center is really not likely a viable thing for the community, and it would cost us more than it would gain for us. It's important to understand that these two different sides of theaters with what they have to offer draw different programs and different audiences. Regional audiences are more likely to come into the city before a show, spend money at a restaurant, go shopping, spend money after the show somewhere, whereas a community theater, and this is, I believe Paula Davis says part of this is her explanation, will bring people to the show, and then they go home. They eat at home, they go to the show, they go back home. For various reasons, the two can't be compared, so I just want to caution anyone who tries to compare them, and people who believe that they can be compared, that they look into that more. So again, it's just a heads up, let's please try to do something about them.
Very good, thank you, Lisa. Rhoda Frye, followed by Ram Gopal.
Be still my heart. The city did what the county, the water boards, and the state should have done. The burden should not have been on your shoulders, but you stepped up when all others fell short. The community thanks you. I was at the city of Los Altos council meeting the other day, and they have their credo up on the wall. So when every, when people come to the city council meeting, they know where all our arrows are pointing. We have a credo, Cupertino aspires to be a balanced community with quiet and attractive residential neighborhoods, et cetera, et cetera. Los Altos is the mission of our staff, council commissions, committees, and volunteers is to foster and maintain. The city of Los Altos is a great place to live and to raise a family. So I think it would be really neat to have it on the wall, and then we all know where we're going. The other thing I'd like to see is to really get a sense of how much rental housing we're going to have and how much for-sale housing we're going to have, and that, that we pre-plan these things. Because when I started looking at how much rental housing is being planned in the city, it was, it was a lot. I don't know how, how much it compared to what we have, but I think we need to find a balance there. The other thing is, in February's National Geographic, there's an interesting infographic that shows the gap between rental cost and mortgage cost. Of course, they're taking a 30,000-foot view, but there was a huge disparity in Cupertino, and I think it might be good to try to close the gap there. And finally, we need to figure out how to preserve the Snyder Hammond homestead as defined in the general plan. It's falling apart, and we need your help on that. And lastly, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you, a million times over.
Hey, thank you, Rhoda. Next is Ram Gopal, followed by Art Cohen.
Good morning, mayor. Good morning, other council members. Yeah, I'm here basically to talk about the Jollyman Offleash Dog Park. So I'm, basically, group of us have been working with the park and recreation commission to bring the proposal to the council. Last January, we, in January, we canvassed and got 800 residents of the Cupertino to sign a petition supporting our proposal. The Parks and Recreation Department did a survey between June and July and got 138 respondents. Of the respondents, 75% live in the, within a mile of Jollyman Park, and 78% support the proposal. So the Parks and Recreation Department reviewed the proposal with the Parks Commission at their October meeting, and, and gave a unanimous recommendation to proceed with the trial. So I'm here, you know, as a dog owner, and, you know, dogs are very friendly. Off-leash dog park would be very useful for the community and for us, for our pets to play around, and then they are all well-trained and will, you know, will behave pets. So I would recommend, you know, I will request the council members to take a look at it, and then, take a look at it, and then proceed with the proposal. Thank you.
Great, thank you. So can staff look into getting this on the agenda? Next is Art Cohen, followed by Janet Van Zoren. Welcome, President Cohen.
Thank you very much, mayor and vice mayor. I, I'm here representing the Cupertino Library Foundation, and there's, there's an incredible, incredible opportunity here. An opportunity which, mayor, you pointed out at the city, at the state of the city, whereas there was a lot of different projects that were not being developed. And although the city has provided the, the approval to develop them, so it was out of our control, if you will, as a city. But here's something that's in our control right now, and that's an expansion of the program room for the Cupertino library. There's a quote I have here from Claire, maybe this has been brought up before, but she has said that "The positive response we receive from the community is only outweighed by the patrons' repeated requests that we do more programming. So often, the reason is that we do not, is that we simply don't have the space." And I don't know if others have shown, but if you go on a, this afternoon, to the library, you'll find that it, there's, there's not, not only is there sometimes problems parking, but beyond the parking issue, when you get inside the library, there's not a place to sit. There's no program rooms, not enough space for people to get together at the library itself. So a lot of people ask, "What's going to be in this new program room?" One of the advantages would be to eliminate many of the overflows, so we don't turn away people away from programs. More, larger programs, the ability to do continuous, contiguous events that require setup for days, more general overflow seating, especially a study room for students at exam time, and a public meeting space accessible to the community in addition to the small think-tank conference room, and support for after-hours without keeping the library open. So I think it's very important that we have this opportunity to bring this program room to light. Funding, I believe that there has been one developer that allocated over $7 million potentially for the program room. I understand that there's funding for a park that's not being developed right now, that potentially could be moved over, over $8 million for that. And then I also want to, I want to end with addressing the, the issue of the parking, that this may impact parking at the, at the actual library. And we all know that parking is a problem, and it's, it's not going to be solved. But this might be an opportunity for building a shuttle service. So let's say, for instance, we have a program that's happening on the weekend. When it's happening on the weekend, we can have parking at one of the high schools, and then have a shuttle service from the high school to the library, or a shuttle service during the week that's from other locations. Looks like I've run out of time, but the Library Foundation would be very excited about the opportunity to build this program room, and should certainly be a goal in 2019 that the, that the city council can actually accomplish, because we have full control as a city to build this. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Art. The last card I have is from Janet Van Zoren. If anyone else wants to speak during oral, now, a lot of these cards actually were already for items that were on the work plan, so this is the last card I have. If anyone else wants...
Hemet, Hemet, do you have Hemet?
I will give you the postmark for Hemet.
Oh.
Okay.
You have it under an agenda item.
Right, it's on the agenda item, so we'll get to that later.
No, no, no. I mean, I do the public forum.
This is all the cards I have for the public forum.
All right. You can send it to the public.
Okay. Okay, welcome, Janet.
Good morning, Mayor Sharp, city council members and staff. I'm, I'm here at the mic today representing myself, and I'm a 40-year, a 42-year resident of Cupertino. I'm just confused, and it may just be a process thing that I don't understand, but I don't see anything on the list here with regard to inclusionary housing, and the, the city had a, a meeting, a study session regarding that, I think it was in June. And I'd really like to encourage us as a city to have another study session on that, and, and some work and brainstorming with staff before that study session happens, because, you know, we pride ourselves on our diversity, and we really need to be looking at the diversity for the full range of affordability, for ages, and also for abilities. And with re-expect of what's happening with housing and with the push for more affordable housing, the amounts and numbers of housing units that may or may not get built in different categories of affordability, it's really important for us to be taking a look at, at the broad scale. As you know, I'm pushing really hard for us to get 40 units of ELI housing for people with developmental disabilities, and I'm still hoping we can achieve that. But in addition, I think we should be looking at the full range of affordability and come up with a plan that's going to work well for our city over a number of years. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. The next card, this is filled out for an agenda item number eight.
Yeah, I think I can say. I knew.
Okay, as long as you're not speaking about athletic fields, that's fine.
No, we are not speaking in general policy.
Okay, go ahead.
Phil, go first.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Suganti Ganapati, and I'm Cupertino resident for quite some time. My kids go to public schools here, and we've been coming from California Cricket Academy to talk about the access for public library field for Sundays to play games and help the kids with both, you know, physical and, you know, mental abilities to work with, like, you know, a lot of other kids together. The kids actually presented a while back before the holidays about the need for having access to the field on Sundays, and there was a follow-up as well, I think, beginning of January, that our guys came and spoke here. So I'm here to, you know, try to understand what is the, you know, idea behind getting that approved, and when we will be having access to, you know, playing in the field on Sundays. Like, the other gentleman who was talking before me here was mentioning about kids, you know, being online and being on social media and, you know, wasting their time pretty much, and, you know, use of the cricket field and having them play on Sundays for like, you know, five to six hours would, you know, help them a lot physically, as well as, like, you know, bonding with others and, you know, having a lot of connections with the community, because most of these kids are from Cupertino and they, you know, they go to the same school or they are together playing for like, you know, hours and hours, and it, it would really help them, you know, getting out of house and being in the sun and play with their friends. Also, this would definitely help them with respect to, you know, going outside and playing at the country level and at the international level. I'm proud to say that, you know, both my kids have played internationally, and, you know, CCA is one of the organizations that have been, you know, invited from England, Wales, to play in very, very, I would say, like, you know, prestigious cricket festivals. So this has been happening for quite some time, and, you know, having our kids practice over the weekend would definitely help them to, you know, hone their specialties and skills, and would help them to, you know, go and face the kids from outside of the country. And pretty happy to say that, you know, we have won many, many championships and tournament titles, mainly because of the dedication of the kids, you know, even if they're not able to play on Sundays, they try to, you know, see what they can do to individually, you know, work with a couple of them or at home, and, you know, try to maximize their potential and try to win the titles. And at this point, I would be really, really happy if I can get some, you know, updates from the city council on the permission for playing on these fields on Sunday, so that the kids don't have to sit at home, you know, watch TV, or being on their gadgets and social media and waste their time, and rather, you know, be out in the field and, you know, be productive and, you know, be physically active, which will help them in the long run. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, and again, if it's an agenda item, it will, you will speak during the agenda item, not during oral, because we can't even respond to you if you speak during oral on that item. The next speaker is Peggy Griffin.
So, so we, on this one, we don't expect to, your response immediately. I think I made a mistake--
Yeah, I understand, but all, all the cards were circled as agenda item.
I know, I, I did that, but I, I was lazy in writing the whole subject matter, so I kind of relate. I didn't know how your, how your process works. Next time, I'll make sure I don't do that.
Okay, so then the next speaker is Peggy Griffin. Right, you're, you're not the next speaker.
Okay.
Okay, I'm not sure if I'm supposed to be here or during the comment time. I want to request an additional--
Is it on the agenda? If it's on the agenda, then speak during the agenda item, along with all the, the cards for agenda eight. What, what are you speaking about?
I want to request an additional item be added.
Oh, okay, all right, that's good.
So, do I talk now?
Yeah, you can, you can talk now, I think.
Okay. Good morning, Mayor, Council members and staff. My name is Peggy Griffin, and I would like to request that you add to the straw items that you improve the processes to manage development projects to avoid past mistakes. In the next few years, there will be several big development projects, hopefully. With this in mind, our city needs to improve the processes and procedures used to manage these projects to prevent prior mistakes from reoccurring. I sent email to y'all, listing some of the problems that occurred on Main Street. And one of the big ones was that there was no written agreement with the developer. There was a resolution and the developer's word. There were no penalties specified if the developer defaulted. I looked at the penalty specified on the transient certification of occupancy, and it's $286 a month. I mean, even I can pay that sometimes. So, the penalties aren't large enough. The responsibility to ensure that the retail was delivered as promised, there needs to be accountability, there needs to be a paper trail, who approves, who changes. And there needs to be a place that the, the public can go and look and say, oh, okay, that was a change, a list of them. The building permits were issued without a covenant filed with the county, and this violated the City Council's resolution instructions that said, prior to a building permit being issued. I mean, it goes on, the last one, I'm going to skip to the last one, the most current building permits were done, finally, when the second covenant that was corrected was filed. And the square footage for the retail doesn't even match the covenant that was filed with the counts, with the county. So, who checks that, and why was this done? These are things that will come up with other projects, and we need to make sure that they get corrected. Thank you.
Thank you, Peggy. Next, we have Connie Cunningham, followed by Joan Chin, followed by Jennifer Griffin. Welcome, Connie.
Good morning, City Council and staff. My name is Connie Cunningham. I've been a resident here for thirty-two years. What got me interested originally, about two years ago, in attending the City Council meetings and a variety of commission meetings, was the topic of homelessness amongst Deans of students. And then, as I read further in the papers, that there's homelessness among all the various colleges in our area with homelessness. It's something that, there may be a variety of answers to, but I had thought to suggest today that at the minimum, we could have outreach to our citizens to let them know the problem exists, and if they are interested in getting on the list to offer a room for rent to students at perhaps a very low cost, or if they are seniors, if they are willing to accept jobs around the house in return for a room while the student is in school. I understand there are many issues with it, but I wanted to just place it as an issue for perhaps the staff or the commissions to look into. Thank you.
Thank you, Connie. Next, we have Joan Chin, followed by Jennifer Griffin. Welcome, Joan.
Thank you. Good morning, City Council and staff. Thanks for the opportunity to speak. I understand that there's a new contract with a firm, a law firm, to replace a city attorney that, that we had. And I noticed that the name of the law firm is the same law firm I've seen in litigation that the city is involved in. And I'm questioning whether that's wise, to have the same law firm on, in a sense, both sides of an issue that the city is involved in. And it seems to me that it would be wise to, if we have this contract with one law firm, to be sure that all the legal representation for the city in litigation is not the same law firm as the one that represents the city. So, I would like to request that that be discussed, and make sure that we're on the right side of things with, with respect to that decision. I also wanted to put in a plug for our program room at the library. I think that's super important, and I think this year is the year to get started with making that happen. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next is Jennifer Griffin, followed by Siraj Gendra.
Good evening. Lord, okay.
Good evening.
Yes, it's a Saturday, isn't it? Okay. Hello, everyone. Happy New Year, and Happy New Year again that's coming up. That's the good thing about being Cupertino, we have several New Years. And it's always good to make new resolutions each time we have a New Year. Anyway, welcome, City Council and City staff and public. I'm Jennifer Griffin, and it looks like I got here right at the right point. But anyway, I just wanted to hope that everything can work out for Cupertino in the New Year, that we have good luck, good prospect, good fortune. I'm gonna, I don't know, I'm going to speak again during what you all called it, public comment, I think, public comment, yeah, okay. But I don't, I did not see urban villages on the agenda. Now, maybe that's coming up under, there was a section that was talking about Cupertino planned areas like South Deans Boulevard, et cetera, et cetera. But can I speak about urban villages, or was that on the agenda?
Go ahead.
San Jose Urban Villages.
Right, San Jose Urban Villages are not on our agenda.
Okay, then I will speak upon that topic. I think it's, it's hard to tell sometimes. Cupertino has its own zoning areas. San Jose is a large city that surrounds parts of Cupertino, and it also shares adjacent property, excuse me, adjacent land frontage with Santa Clara. If people are not aware, San Jose has a noble vision for their city, which I certainly commend them, called Envision 2040. And I think that that's very, very good for San Jose. San Jose is a historic city, it's 200 years old, I know my California history. It's a very large city, as is, and Santa Clara's a very old city. The two of them were pretty much the only things in this area, other than the Native Americans in the late 1700s. So, but at this point, some of the rollout of the urban village has caused issues for the neighboring cities, and I would say, I think that it is causing San Jose to take a step back in looking out how they are dealing with their neighbors. Because I have been to a lot of San Jose meetings, and I commend the city, they're very, very proactive. But I do think that they need to look at how they are dealing with their neighboring cities with the urban villages. Cupertino is not, Cupertino is a sovereign city, as is Santa Clara, as is other cities. Cupertino is not part of San Jose, it's not part of West San Jose. We have different, we have different issues, we have different interests, and we are a small city, but we have very, very important boundaries. So therefore, I think it's very important that San Jose take a careful look at how they are rolling out their urban villages for their adjacent neighbors. My impression is--
Please finish up.
--that San Jose is pushing hard to push their urban villages on the neighboring cities, and I don't think it's appropriate. I think Cupertino needs to look to its boundaries, and make sure that we keep our values, and we don't become part of San Jose. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Jennifer. Next, we have Siraj Gendra, and last card is Herman--
Herman Burch.
Burch. And again, remember, we are speaking on items not on the agenda.
Sure, yeah. Yeah, I just wanted to follow up a couple of things based on, you know, a couple of previous speakers who've talked about the Cupertino ground facility for cricket.
That, again, that's an agenda item, agenda eight, so it's, if you speak on it now, we cannot respond or address your concerns.
Okay.
You would be better off speaking when it's agenda item, because then, you know, we're allowed to discuss it with you.
Okay. Do we want-- Yeah, so we, I have to leave now.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, sorry, yeah. No, I just wanted to add a couple of things, couple of points to what, what my friends actually told. One is actually, so we are, if you look at it, we are actually having our lower age group kids play in Cupertino Library, all the older kids actually play in other grounds. So, I mean, these are like, you know, eight-year-olds, nine-year-olds, and ten-year-olds kind of thing. So it's kind of like, very important for us to have the ground on Sundays, so that, you know, those kids get more opportunity. I mean, A is they can't travel to like Morgan Hill and, and other areas where they can actually, you know, they get grounds, but it's, it's for the older, older age groups. And, yeah, the other thing is, kids actually call Cupertino Library grounds as their home ground. I mean, whenever they play with all the other kids, I mean, it's just unofficially their home ground, so they have a lot of emotional attachment with that ground. So it, it kind of like, makes, you know, a lot of sense for us to kind of like, have them play there more, especially on Sundays. And, and, and again, you know, it's kind of like, gives them much more opportunity to bond, and, and learn the game, and, you know, represent the city of Cupertino, or even, you know, Academy, and wherever they actually go and play. So it's, 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 it's kind of like a very emotional attachment for them, so we should, which, which I guess we should encourage. So, just those two points. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And our last speaker on non-agenda items is--
Hemet.
Hemet Burch.
Yeah, hi. I understand you'll be discussing, and I truly appreciate, we won't be here unfortunately at that time, but just, you know, so as you have heard, we are here for extended time for the field use. And as you know, I mean, you know, kids here, you must be following news about one in three middle school, and one in five high schoolers catching up on wrong habits these days, you know, vaping, and all these bad things. And we have really taken a crusade to give them proper cultural, as well as habit, better habits, by building stronger, physically, you know, well-built community. And we need them to be out on the field, doing the sports, or doing the physical activities more. As you know, high schools have opened fields on Sundays, so young boys and girls can do physical activities, they open for community, for walk-in, or, or kind of pickup games. And there is no reason Cupertino need to stop. As a minimum, you know, we should allow pickup games, if nothing else. What is happening is, court enforcement is becoming pretty vigilant, and instead of focusing on driving away kids with, who are doing unhealthy activities that we've come across many times, sitting in the corner, they are, they are driving away kids who are playing and doing healthy activities. I think that's not what, you know, the tax money we are paying for. I think they should allow kids to do healthy activities in their neighborhood, they should not be stopping them from doing that. So that's our request, okay? Thank you for your time, and all the best for your long meeting today. I'm sure you guys will do fantastic. Bye.
Okay, thank you. That's the end of the public comment. So now, I will turn it over to our interim city manager, Tim Borden.
Thank you, Mayor. Good morning, City Council. Thank you, public, for coming and sharing our Saturday morning with us this morning, and a great, great start with some very good comments. We're gonna, we have a aggressive agenda here ahead of us, so we have a lot to talk about. There is going to be some council time for some team building, which I think is very important, as we move into this next year, and all the, all the items we need to tackle. And then we have a long list of potential work program ideas to talk about, and then ultimately prioritize. That list will be rolled into, we'll, we'll bring that back, we'll look at resources on how we could deliver, and, and on those priorities, roll those into a work program study session that you'll, you'll see on our agenda on March 19th, and then there'll be some more discussion on that. So that's kind of the plan going forward. And then, what I'm going to do right now, just to keep us going, I'm going to turn it over to a volunteer we have helping us today, Amy Chan. So I'll, besides my Alexander's lunch that I owe her--
(applause)
--I, I do want to publicly thank Amy for, for taking this on today. I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Amy.
Okay, is that on? Good, good. So, thank you. Good morning, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council members. Thank you for having me to join you today on your, probably one of your more important work sessions today. It's supposed to be informal, so relax a little bit, let your mind open up, listen to the audience, listen to your, your mind, and in terms of setting your program for this coming year. As I look at how we can be helpful, how we can look at the future, we, with the help of interim city manager, we look at what is city's values, and what is the city's vision? And then, what is our, what is the word, the mission? So as we look at the council's, or the city's mission, we didn't find any that readily that we can look for, nor a set of values that we as a city hold true. And the only thing we found is the mission statements. So, can everyone see? Can we enlarge that a little bit? So our current vision says, the mission says, the mission of this city is to provide exceptional service, encourage all members of the community to take responsibility for one another, and support the values of education, innovation, and collaborations. So that's what we have today. But what I'd like for a council member to take a couple minutes to think through, in your mind, what is the city's vision? Where do you want to go? That should be a guiding post for you to begin to set your work plan year after year. Today's session is really focused on the coming year, priorities, but what we, with your input, I am hoping that the city can eventually develop a vision for this city, and the values that we hold dear. And so, again, I would ask council member, this is more informal, so be a little bit more free-form. Of course, Mr. Mayor, I'll be looking to you to manage the process. So, there you go. Who wants to go first?
Okay, thank you, Amy. Thank, and thank you for staying within your three minutes. I guess we'll let the Vice Mayor go.
Does this--
No, that microphone doesn't work.
Sure.
Sure.
Yeah, use, use that one.
Maybe it will be--
Yeah.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
But since I have the mic, I actually like this mission statement, so I don't have anything to add right now.
Vision is?
The mission statement.
Vision, not mission. You know, I'll be honest with you, since I got on the council in December of 2011, I don't recall ever seeing this mission statement, so.
Welcome to city of Cupertino.
Were you familiar with it in your two periods here? No. So it's, I mean, it's, it's, it's interesting. But I like Liang as a starting point, I think it's, it's reasonable. I mean, you can't articulate all the values of the city in one sentence, right? And so you have to stay fairly high level, and, and so there's nothing to me just begging to be fixed or changed here.
Yeah, I like that we, it says, take responsibility for one another and support education, innovation, and collaboration. I think we are all for that. And of course, provide exceptional service, so, yeah. It's a good starting point, but never seen it before.
Okay, so I started writing a vision statement as soon as Amy finished, and then I went on another website to see what other cities have, and it's actually similar to what I wrote. I was talking, I think our main thing, we want to maintain the quality of life for all residents, and we don't want to exclude any residents. We need to be an inclusive community. We're probably one of them, we're a very diverse community in Cupertino, and I think we want to continue that. I, I don't know if transparency is part of vision, but I think that's an area where Cupertino could definitely improve on the transparency of our government and listening to our residents.
Yeah, I would just add to that, it would be good to set forth as a value, making sure that we use honest data and proceed in a rational fashion. So with regard to things like special interests, tainting, or perspectives, you know, I think we tend to be pretty, pretty analytical in this city, and just to be able to take a step back and see, really, for any given issue, what we can be doing to try to objectively look at the, the factors that are underlying a particular decision, so. And then also, I mean, this is much more nebulous, like a lot of the things that you see here, but having, having a sense of compassion for one each other, one another, I think is often something that gets lost in the heat of discussions. So, you know, a little bit of empathy, I think, is probably always, always in order. So if that can get reflected in the values or a mission statement, then, then, yeah, I would encourage that.
Like Steve said, then I quickly grab a pencil and start writing vision and values. So I'll start with values, and I would say, for values, having integrity in representing the residents, making sure that that's the focus. And for the vision, similarly, fulfilling the residents' vision. And by that, to get the residents' vision for this community, it's all of our community, we need to be doing a lot of community engagement and outreach, and then making sure that's what's driving the decisions that we make.
Okay, thank you, Amy. I'm giving it back to you.
Thank you.
You have two, you have three minutes.
Oh, thank you for the thirty minutes allowance, Mr. Mayor. So it's really helpful, truthfully, to hear all of your point of views to help us set this year's program. Even though these are not in writing, but your view and your values really speaks loud and clear in terms of setting your priority for this year. Is that on?
Yeah.
So the next portion that I wanted you to focus on is the coming year. Now, as is stated on the agenda, what is the success in four terms? What does that mean in terms of, at the end of this year, when you look back on your accomplishments, what is success looks like to you? And that's the way you should really look at your priorities. In preparing for today's workshop, staff and some council member have come up with a list of different ideas. These are just the initial ideas. And what I am suggesting council to consider is to look through the twenty, I think there's twenty-eight items here, to see what else is missing. At the end, we would want to count, to have council member, based on what you heard earlier in the oral communication, to put that in. But before you go there, what I, again, what I'm suggesting council members do is go review, and interim city manager Borden will walk you through the different items, and to see if that item is clear to you, and if you have any questions of those. And so at the end of that process, do not add any list yet, do not, until you open the public hearings to see if there's any additional ideas and suggestions from the members of the public that want to add your list. Now, now again, this morning, you have already heard quite a number of audience provided you with some ideas to add on this year's program. So, go through the list, ask any questions you have, and then, at the end, Mr. Mayor, I'm suggesting that we open for public comments, and after that, then council members should feel free to add any new ideas onto the list. And then after that, we'll do an exercise to rank the different items, and I'll be back at that time.
Okay, thank you, Amy. We, I just want to point out, we have a hard stop at noon, so we, we need to be expeditious in this, in these exercises.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. One, one thing, just to add on, one thing on to that exercise, one member of the public did, did bring forward that a vision statement that is stated on the general plan, so let me just read that to you, just for your information. It does say that Cupertino aspires to be a balanced community with quiet and attractive residential neighborhoods, exemplary parks and schools, accessible open space areas, hillsides and creeks, and a vibrant mixed-use heart of the city. Cupertino will be a safe, friendly, healthy, connected, walkable, bikeable, and inclusive for all residents and workers, with ample space, places, and opportunities for people to interact, recreate, innovate, and collaborate. So there's more food for thought. I think, you know, it's still, I think that some of the overarching goals that you put out there really hit on these, some of the more detailed portions of that, of that statement, but that is a vision statement that's currently within the general plan. Any, yes?
So, so that's the general plan vision statement, but not the city's vision statement?
Correct.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Okay. So I'd like, I have a question about today's process. I was looking up an email that I sent to Tim earlier. I looked at some of the work program items from current year, eighteen, nineteen. There are some good items there that we haven't finished, because I see that the Park Master Plan is also listed here. My understanding is we are looking at only future new items, but Park Master Plan is an old item, but that's listed here. So I'm wondering, those old items that we haven't finished, are we planning to continue or not, that? For example, the BMR linkage fees. The last council was looking at, this is a fees commercial development pays for affordable housing. It seems there was no progress on that last year. I hope we continue to make progress. And the penalties for violation of conditions of approval, which one of the, I think Peggy mentioned, it was on the last year's agenda, work program, but doesn't seem to have any progress. And the community garden improvements, that's seems, that's not even included in the Park Master Plan, it's, but it's in the work program. And we had a strategic plan for spatial events, heart of the city plan clarification, setback requirements, and so on.
So since we're short of time, can you let him answer if we're going to continue these?
So there are like small business development center, these are, there are some really good programs from last year, so, yeah.
I'll just very briefly add, I have the same question. We have this big list from last year, some of those items were pending and, or most of them in progress, right? It'd be helpful to know which of these items are still outstanding, which are sort of on autopilot and going without any further council direction, and which staff is looking for us to, to put in the priority list to do or not do this year. Thanks.
Thank you very much for the question, so I can clarify that, because I, yeah, that's very important for, for our discussion today. So, so, yeah, the, the city has a current work program that was, was initially adopted last March. After that, there was some, some changes to that in October, so that, we have a current work program that was adopted in, in October. What we're doing today is, is talking about new ideas for next year's work program. What, at the end of today, you're going to, you're going to prioritize those, that's going to come back to staff, and then what you're going to see on March 19th, there's going to be a study session where the public can come, speak more on some of these items, there'll be council discussion on, on, on some of the priorities that the, the council, the staff is going to come back with resource ideas on how we're going to deliver some of these. We're going to fold the new ideas and the priorities we hear today into the, the current work program, the ongoing items. So, so, so we'll, we'll propose how we're going to deliver those current ones, and then your higher priority ones today, and how we intend to do that with resources. So, so Vice Mayor Chow had a couple of good questions about things that happen to be in the current work program that are on your list today, and perhaps would want to take those off, like the Park Master Plan, because it is, that is in our current work program, and, and maybe you want to not talk about that today because it's not a new item.
Right, so just, I'm just trying to clarify that you're intending to retain all the elements of this that are not done.
Correct.
And bring us a new list based on things that are additive, so we don't have to be redundant and talk about the things that are already on here.
That's correct.
And on March 19th?
The BMR linkage fee, we'll give you an update of where we're at on that.
So we add new things to the list, and then come March 19th, we rack and stack, and, okay, we can't do everything, but we, we then can evaluate the old priorities against the ones we've added.
Correct. So if you, if you come up with all your high priorities today in community development, well, obviously, we're not going to put those, be able to put those with resources all at the top of the list and fold in all the current ones, so.
Yeah.
So, yeah, I think, I think you got it now.
So, right, so we have an hour and a half, if I understand correctly, to not talk about these, even though many of them are near and dear to people's hearts, but just the new stuff. Thank you.
That's correct. So, yeah, thank you very much for letting me clarify that. Okay, so what I want to do is, we'll go ahead and, if we can just, I'm going to go through these one by one, get, get your, any questions, clarifications on what the, the potential work program idea would be. The mayor asked that we, which one was it, Mr. Mayor?
Oh, I asked for number twenty-four, which is the last, second to last to be moved up.
Okay.
Because there's another engagement that that person has.
Okay, thank you. So, some of these, we're going to go through one by one, but if we can talk about number twenty-four, event support. So there is a very brief description, so if there's any questions on that, budget funds to support Cupertino, tournament of bands, specifically having the city bear the cost of sheriff's deputies, that is now paid for by the event.
Okay, right, this is pretty simple. I've been involved with tournament events long after my children were done with high school. It's the longest-running event in Cupertino, I think it's forty-seven years now, and it's supposed to be a fundraising event. Unfortunately, often it doesn't turn out that way. And one of the reasons is, the school has to bear the cost of things like paying for the sheriff's deputies to control traffic during the parade and, and the field show. So I, there is one card on here, on this item, if I'd like to call that, those people now to talk about that. Okay, so the first one is Gilbert, or Mr. I, I'm not going to pronounce his last name since nobody is able to do so, and I think that is the only one on that. So welcome, Gilbert.
All right. Good morning. My name is Gilbert Irores. I've had the privilege of teaching at Cupertino High School for the last twelve years as the director of instrumental music. I'm accompanied here by our, our ban booster president, Ms. Addie Roth, and our vice president, Sandy Kitagawa. So to expand a little bit of what Mayor Scharf spoke of, over the last forty-nine years, the Cupertino Tournament of Bands has hosted approximately thirty bands from the Bay Area and beyond. Those bands come and compete in a two-part competition, a parade and a field show. The parade portion is, used to be the highlight of the Tournament of Bands, but recently we've, we've sustained some, some losses financially because of the growth of the required expenses to put on that event, sheriffs, street closures, street signs, things of that nature. So as it stands right now, our outgoing cost that we do not recuperate because we don't charge members of the community to come out and watch is approximately $5,000. That number is expected to grow based on additional street closures that are going to be required due to additional traffic with the, with the building of Main Street Cupertino, Apple. So we have, we experience a lot more traffic, and we acquired the services of a professional parade coordinator, Mr. Ray Pulver, who coordinates many parades throughout California. And based on his professional advice and that of the sheriff's deputies that were on site at this last Tournament of Bands, they, they request that we do some more street closures, which is going to require more deputies, more street signage, and things of that nature. So what is supposed to be a, what is supposed to be a fundraiser is turning out to not be a fundraiser, and we're losing approximately $5,000 a year on that, so after a few years, you can just imagine. I attribute, I attribute that to the cost of a tuba, if you will. So instruments are always, and tubas are something that we're always in need of, so we're, we're pretty much losing that amount per year. So what we're asking today is for additional support to maybe cover some of the city costs that are involved in putting on this event.
Okay, thank you. Did, did Addie also want, wish to speak?
Hello, thanks for having us. So I just wanted to reiterate a couple of things. We're going to be in our forty-ninth year with the Tournament of Bands, so we're only one year shy of our fiftieth anniversary, and we want to keep this parade going. We think it's a great service to the community, it's free for everyone to come, so we, and we're happy to do the work to put on the parade. This takes a hundred-plus parents at least to put on this event, and alumni families still participate, as well as current families. So we're happy to do all the coordination and work to, to pull off this event, but we, we request that we get support so that we're not losing money on the event to keep it going. So we hope that you will consider assisting us, and we'd like to continue partnering So we hope that you will consider assisting us, and we'd like to continue partnering together to make this maybe even a bigger city event, that I think we could even make it bigger and better than it has been in past years. And I'll just, on the benefit to the community, we bring over four, between 4,000 and 5,000 people to our community for this event from all over Northern California, so it's a, I think it's a boon to the community and brings in a lot of business to Main Street Cupertino in terms of food sales and whatnot. That's stuff that we used to make money on, and we don't do that anymore, so we need to think differently about how we're gonna fund this event and grow this event in the future, so.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor?
That's all the cards I have. Oh, sorry.
In the interest of time, I mean, I think we're all likely to be supportive of support for the various festivals, including this one. We have a traditional process, which is to rack and stack the requests as we do our budget, so I think, I think it'd be appropriate for us to include this among the other requests we, we get to support festivals. I'm certainly supportive.
All right, thank you.
So actually, can I talk? So actually, number item 26, which I requested, is review policies on relationships with various local nonprofits organizations, so that we have a process to request, so this falls into that general policy.
Okay, all right, thank you. Tim, you wish to continue?
Yeah, thank you, so I'll go up, I'm gonna start at the top, top of the list now, and just, we'll go one by one, you can stop me if there's any questions or clarifications. We'll go through the process, council will have an opportunity to add, modify as we go along, and then we'll have public comments on, where public can come back and talk about any of the, any of the ones on the list when we're done here. So, start with number one, so as I heard it, there may be a request to go ahead and pull that one off, because that's already in the list. So if that's accurate, I'll keep moving, okay? Number two, so this is some review of our general plan and zoning ordinance, so this is really the idea of applying objective standards as necessary and really phase them, such as VAALCO, and Heart of the City specific plans would likely be first on that list, so some cleanup of our general plan. Again, stop me if you'd like, like any comments along the way.
Does that include the whole city?
Yeah, so I think we would get, we would get citywide, and I think we just want to take that in a phased manner. Okay, number three, so commissions and committees, so there was some ideas that we've heard about potential new commissions, new committees, so if there's any questions, comments, clarifications on that, we're open to hearing that.
Can I add one thing for number item two?
Sure.
So Brock wasn't holding the microphone, he was asking about Oaks, whether that's included in Heart of the City, just for the public. For item two, one member mentioned that we should look at our ratio of rental and ownership housing in Cupertino, could we also consider that as we review the standard?
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, on this item, number three, the commissions and committees, I just want to make a comment with regard to, we are reaching out to our commissions through our interim city manager with regard to what we can be doing to help facilitate the communications between council and the commissions, as well as council and the commissions, as well as the public. That started in the summer, as basically a request to see how we go forward and, you know, get that kind of advisory function from our commissions. You know, I don't want to put too blunt of a point on it, but as a result of that, we had a really far-reaching exercise with regard to, you know, just a number of things. I would request that staff really focus upon their core functions in a lot of these respects. I mean, I don't mean to pick on particular examples, but in Mayor Scharf's State of the City a few days ago, I mean, things like making sure a PowerPoint was functioning was not actually, you know, done. So I mean, I think these small details, like trying to figure out things are functioning well, and especially if you have a mission statement that says, "Let's have exceptional service," you know, let's just make sure that we're adhering to our core functions, and making sure that we're effectuating, you know, what our particular departments do. If our finance department is supposed to balance the books every year, let's get those books balanced. If our public information office is supposed to reach out to our community and try to figure out how to reach people, if it's not next door, there are a lot of people using WeChat as well as WhatsApp, for instance, I mean, let's make sure that we're effectuating those particular functions. So with regard to commissions and committees, we are in the middle of an exercise trying to reach out to all of our commissions, so let's just go ahead and do that effectively. I know that we're doing that in the next month or so, but I'd really like to see that intercommunication becoming effective, rather than turning into, you know, silos, turning into, you know, territorial matches, because we're really just trying to make sure that the city is effective in each of its, you know, particular. I'm really glad to see that our city attorney's office is coming into City Hall, that's been such a long time coming, and, you know, frankly, there's fracturing within our city in terms of various departments, and really just needs to become cohesive. All right, thanks.
Thank you.
Okay.
I guess I kind of requested this item, so one issue that keeps coming up when I talk to residents is traffic, traffic, but we don't have one commission that focuses on traffic. So that's the reason I thought we should have a Traffic and Transit Commission, to really focus on the transportation issue that we face every day, and the community engagement, that keeps coming up, but we don't have one commission that figures out why residents feel they are not, they didn't hear about this or that, while the staff did try their best to reach out to residents. So, then another thing is, I hope to look at certain commission, the role like Fine Arts Commission, it actually has been, they have been taught in including visual art and culture, so I'm hoping to expand a little, maybe there will be an Art and Culture Commission that can bring the diverse culture we have in Cupertino. And of course Legislative Action Committee, which we really need.
Okay, thank you.
Let's move out, we really need to move quickly, okay?
I'm sorry, with regard to the LEC, we absolutely do need that. We don't have an LEC function in Cupertino. I sat on the LEC last year, and it was an ad hoc committee that basically convened every time, you know, maybe a staff member or two wanted to push something forward to, a letter to our local, you know, representative for the state or something like that. I mean, we need an actual LEC where we're considering these issues, and someone on staff actually has their pulse on how to communicate with the outside world, outside of Cupertino. And so it's just, it's defunct right now, because we've, we've actually lost that particular point person. So, speaking of committees, absolutely, let's get this moved forward. Mayor Scharf has talked about getting the West Valley Cities together. I think Cupertino needs to do something proactive about making sure that our legislative interests on the broader scale are actually represented, not just in the legislative arena, but also within, within the media. I mean, we actually have active media attitudes in Cupertino that spurn even things like the Cupertino Courier. That needs to stop. I mean, our city needs to start working with our newspapers to try to get some of our story out there. Not everyone is really aware of what the scene is, and so, you know, with respect to the media, if we're not even working with our local media channels, how do we expect that the larger perception of Cupertino is gonna be reflected with regard to our values and mission statement?
Okay.
Okay.
I agree with everything he said. It's a desperate need, especially in light of all the harmful legislation that will be emanating from Sacramento very soon, and we really need to get this moving quickly.
Okay, thank you. The only thing I would add to that is, I think we may have a, frankly, a bigger voice and be in a stronger alliance if we go in with Sunnyvale and Mountain View, so, I mean, nothing against West Valley Cities, but I think our characteristics are probably more shared with them in terms of, yeah, frankly, with legislators. Thank you.
Okay. All right, thank you. Number, number four, community engagement. Any questions or comments there?
So, this one is one I like to really focus on. I see what's written here, block leaders, neighborhood watch, I'd like to expand on that, and I have kind of three areas that I think. So number one is resident advisory group. Make sure that all of Cupertino is covered. I think with the current block leader program, we have a lot of people, but they're not necessarily covering all of Cupertino. Making sure all of Cupertino has a resident advisor that's going to have access to us council, and two-way dialogue with them, what are they thinking is needed or concerns, and then we can tell them what we think we can and can't do. Number two would be a current city survey. I've got some pages that are dated back in 2013 from city survey, why the people come to Cupertino, schools, things like that, concerns, traffic, but I think we should have something much more current than 2013. So I think a current city survey needs to be done, and somewhat of a living survey. Projects keep coming, the Oaks, things of importance to the residents keep coming, cricket, dog parks, those should be added as they come to the city survey, and allowing residents to then weigh in on it, and not just kind of be left in the background. And then number three, so that the residents truly know what, what we're trying to work on individually and as a council. It's actually item 13, council webpages, but I put it under this community engagement, because it's where I think the residents can then go and say, gee whiz, I, I've talked to John about the dog parks, I can go click on his webpage and see if he in fact does have something there, or somebody has a concern, they can look at all five, who would be the most appropriate councilman to bring this issue to. So, those three aspects under community engagement.
Okay, thank you, John.
Thank you. I would just note that I did put your idea about the resident advisory committee as number 27, and I think, I think you're correct, it would be more appropriate to roll into the description of this one, so I'll do that.
On that point, we probably need to make a clarification, our agenda only has 25 items, and I don't think we actually, yeah, I don't think we actually announced that there is a 28-item list.
Yes.
Is that something that's available to the public? Is, has that been, is that what that stack of papers is next to the lectern?
Yeah, there are some extras up there, and then we'll actually show those up as we get there as well.
Okay, I mean, I think we just need to notice the public in that regard, because we're operating off a list that's different from the one that was in our public agenda.
And you, and you may add as we move along, too, so we'll keep a live list as we go up there, so folks will have the opportunity to come and comment on all these as we, as we finish this list.
And let me point out, I have a lot of cards here, so we're gonna have to, I'll cut down the amount of time, but we still need to move quickly through this list.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so, I'd like to add that for this item, the block leader program has been there, I think, for 15 years, we cover about 30% of our neighborhood, and that's why I think it's important that we put an effort to expand that. And I added neighborhood associations, because if we look at stakeholder groups like in the Parks Master Plan, they are a list of groups of like organized sports, different nonprofits, but they are actually more like special interest groups. We don't have groups that actually represent everyday residents. We didn't reach out to even HOAs when we do Parks Master Plan, but most neighborhoods have no association, so I can understand that there is no one to, not organization to reach out to, but probably we do need some kind of encourage more neighborhood association or neighborhood representative for different neighborhoods of Cupertino, so that when we want to do a Park Master Plan Advisory Group, we can include everyday residents, that was the intention.
Okay, thank you. Next is number five, is the city, city webpages for high-profile projects or issues, so any questions or clarifications on that one?
Just, on the one hand, so everybody realizes, so important webpages or important issue webpages, you know, like Lehigh is an important issue, so many people are interested in that, Regnar Creek Trail is an important issue. When we have these, making sure that people can go to one spot and pretty much get the latest and all the information, and so keeping that current. But the point that I wanted to bring up was, this being very different from the webpage that I previously mentioned, council webpages, that these are webpages just for specific projects, and I did want to say that we need to make sure that the residents are aware that these things are gonna be created and exist, and we're gonna be getting a public relations person, and so that should be part of his role, to make sure that all these important things, we might want to periodically send out a postcard to the residents to let them know what new projects or interests, webpages were created, or maybe put it in the Cupertino Scene and Cupertino Courier. Again, if they, if they exist, but the residents don't know about it, then we really haven't taken advantage of getting this information.
I'm curious why this item is on the council goal setting, because I thought this should be everyday operation of the city public information office, right? Don't we, we already put our webpages, it's just some items are not covered, like the Dog of Lich Park, I didn't see a page on that, I tried to find, but this is an ongoing thing that we have been doing, and it shouldn't be a new goal, it should be something that maybe could be improved, but it's not a goal, it's...
It's correct that this will not be a lot of additional resources, but I think we do need to bring some consistency to these, so that people know what to expect on all of our information pages, as well as subscription services for those pages.
If we have a, if we have a hard stop of noon, then we should probably spend about a minute on each of these items.
Right, well, it's not necessary for everyone to comment on every item.
But at the, at the most, let's just try to spend about a minute on, on each of these, all right? Because you have a lot of public comments.
Yes, exactly.
So we have a lot of large projects, and some of these master plans that we, that we've talked about and will be moving forward. Number six is a, develop a funding strategy for that. Any questions or comments?
Yes, I've, I've brought this up, I've brought this up previously, I'd like to make sure that we, speaking to a number of the comments from public today, find a way to make sure that our library plan for the expansion is separated out from the Civic Center Master Plan, because that has been stalling it for quite a bit, it's a, it's a different area of the Civic Center, and it's very heavily utilized and in need of more space from, from the city. So, I'd like to see whether we can put this on the agenda sooner rather than later with regard to funding the plan that we approved in 2015. Back then, the estimate was approximately $6.9 million, I understand that elevated costs might have increased that by this point, but we do have a plan, and we also have funding sources that we could be looking at, which include the Joint Powers Authority, which governs all of the library, county library system branches, including ours. So, you know, if we can put that on the agenda specifically to look at the library expansion, I would appreciate that, thanks.
Sorry, so the funding strategy, I think we should also include expenditures for bike, under bike and pad, I think we have some big projects there also that need funding.
So, if we could back up, this is item six we're discussing, yes?
Correct.
So, you know, in the mayor's State of the City address this week, there were a lot of ambitious plans, right? there were a lot of ambitious plans, right? We're gonna go get Civic Center done. We're gonna do a new council chamber. We want to honor the request to build ELI housing. All of these things. And I think if we are trying to fund this out of city pockets, the library expansion, whatever it is, I think we need to get a clear idea of what our capacity is. I, unlike, well, a past council member, Barry Chang, who thought we couldn't use debt financing, I quite think we should use debt financing for long-term capital improvements that we fund over a long period. But we really do have to have a clear idea of how much debt we can incur for these things. If we are not getting community benefits, say, out of a project at Valco, because instead, right, we have some state-mandated project that gives us nothing, in fact, we may actually have a deficit. We may have to be paying for city improvements while getting nothing if the state-mandated project gets built. Then I think we really have to have a sober assessment. And we need that in time for our budget session, right? Because we can put a lot of stuff on the table, but we gotta be really clear about what it's gonna cost and how much debt we can realistically incur, and frankly, what our options might be to, you know, to go to voters to support bonds we might need. So I think we need... Before we get too enthusiastic about, yeah, we're gonna go do all this stuff, we really need to understand how we maintain our financial health and viability for the long term, including, yes, funding our obligations to city employees and retirees, which of course loom large as more realistic assessments of long-term rates of return in CalPERS, as well as our own PARS fund are made. Thank you.
So I want to add that community benefits from a much higher-density project is not free. It comes with much more payment for us in the future for traffic, for everything. Like the Tournament of Bends is a result of added project. They need added patrol. So these are not free. We need to consider that. And then, yeah, I keep wondering, how much do we have to spend? Because we keep studying for big capital projects. Well, they are all scattered everywhere. So what we need is someplace where all of these capital projects could be one place, so that we have an idea of what we are planning for.
Yeah, I agree. Do we have anyone on staff that actually is out there looking for whatever government money might be available that we wouldn't want to miss because we weren't looking for? Is somebody on staff looking for grants, looking for matching funds, anything of that nature that would be feeding in? Or is it just a...
Let me speak to that. So we don't have a centralized point person whose job is to look for grant funding. It's really much more on an ad hoc basis. So for instance, when the Stevens Creek Corridor was made, if there were people on Parks and Rec or in Public Works that could apply for these grant-funding, you know, projects, then they did it. It's much less centralized, and this is probably a good function to place into somebody that has that core capability. But that's not something that we've identified in the past and said, "Look, you know, this is something that would be good for our city. We could probably get a lot of money this way." But it is just much more on an ad hoc basis, and it probably just needs to be placed into a core function of somebody's job description.
That's absolutely correct. And in fact, in your last budget, you did approve money to go forward to hire a consultant to do that grant management and monitoring for us. And we're in the middle of doing an RFP for that right now. So that's a great comment.
Great. Just want to remind, we have one hour left. You have 24 more items to go through.
So the next item, and you know, part of this, as you noted, is looking at additional revenue. So number seven is modernize business tax and analyze potential revenue measures. So any comments or clarifications there?
Just...
Okay.
About a week ago, I met with a group, including the people that successfully got the Mountain View Business Tax passed, I think with more than 70% of the vote, and it did not require 2/3. So we might want to look at a regional measure here, or work with other cities to ensure that we all do something at the same time, so we don't have businesses saying, "Oh, well, we're just gonna leave and go to the next city over." Because frankly, where the money is now is in these huge corporations, especially after all these big tax cuts that they receive. So that money's not going to the federal government, and it's not trickling back to us anymore.
Okay, any other comments or questions on that?
Hello? Hi. So, yeah, for... Just for the information. So actually, that group studied, compared the business tax of our region with other regions. And our business is paying very little business tax compared with other regions. So that's why we should look at modernizing our business tax structure. And compared with San Francisco, they increased their business tax by a lot, like $200... $2,000 per employee, but companies keep coming in.
This is also something that we approached in a completely incorrect manner, in my assessment. I mean, we put forward a business tax that was gonna largely affect the company that has probably the largest cash reserve in the world. And we said, "Okay, well, we're not gonna identify anything that we need to pay for. We're gonna put this, you know, basically in a two-week turnaround." And here it is. We need to find somebody who is approaching this in a professional manner and outreaches in an effective way. So, yes, we're doing this in conjunction with this ongoing conversation about what we can do about transit and various congestion issues around the city. But let's pay attention to how we do this. I mean, we really shouldn't be giving it to a staffer who has a week to do it and types up some survey questions in 10 minutes to be texted out to everyone in the voter rolls in Santa Clara County that happens to reside in Cupertino. I mean, that's not a scientific way to gather information, because it's not vetted by someone who actually has some survey experience on a technical level. So let's do this right this time, and not just take our time, but do it correctly.
Thank you. Number eight, assess current athletic use policy, scheduling process, and fee schedule. Any questions on this?
I'd like to ask that we add the off-leash dog conversation to this. I mean, because it's a natural place to put it. You know, there are a number of these items that can be consolidated, so let's do it in an efficient way. I mean, after all, it is a field use. So we have people that are soccer players, cricket players. I mean, you know, it is probably high time that we revisited this whole topic altogether.
Same comment.
Let's do it thoroughly and well.
Good point. Thank you.
This doesn't work. Okay, go, John.
Since the mic's here. So the comment I would toss out, you know, when I met with Jeff, I was so happy that he's enthusiastic about, you know, trying to accommodate sports with fields. And I met with Dr. Baker, the schools. He was very supportive. Where I'm kind of coming from is that if there are facilities, I think we need to make sure we have the ability for the residents to access those facilities. I mean, I regularly take my kids to both Sedgwick and Hyde for basketball in the playground area where they have the courts. The YMCA uses the indoor gyms. Well, all these fields and things, I think, should not just be idle if there are people and groups that would want to use them. So rather than a top-down, which I would characterize as somebody or group comes and says, "I'd like to use," I'd prefer, you know, the bottom-up. What do we truly have available, you know, days, times, locations? And then somehow make that available, known, so that different groups then could say, "Wow, we'd really like to use that field or those courts on this day." And then Jeff and his department is responsible for channeling those, signing them up, and overseeing it. But making that an issue.
Okay, yeah. Can we... Oh, Rod, sorry.
Yeah, just very briefly. So if I speak loud enough, I think I'm recording. Two things. When I started my tenure here in 2012, we had a very contentious debate about off-leash dogs. I don't have a dog in this fight. Okay? But it was a... It was a... I mean, it rivals some of the biggest debates we've had in the city. Let me put it that way. And I know we've had people come today and in the past as advocates. All I would caution my fellow council members to do is to not assume that this is gonna be easy, right? We are going to have to do outreach to the folks who use Jollyman, and there will be a very robust discussion from people who aren't and haven't been in the room recently. But it'll be a big deal. So I just want everybody to think about folks that aren't here, right? The second is on these fields. I know we're proud of our fields. We try to maintain them in good shape. We have concerns about overuse, especially when the fields get wet, because they can, you know, we can have tripping injuries and other things, and we have liability. So we have to be... While we'd like to have our fields in constant use perhaps for sports, we also have to think about the responsibility we have to have fields maintained in a condition that's safe for play. The last thing we need is a lot of folks coming to us and saying, you know, "We were irresponsible." So I know the city's staff perhaps has been conservative at times, but I do think, you know, we ought to think about that aspect of this, whether the fields do need rest or not. We also ought to think about folks who enjoy using the fields for their spontaneous activities and picnics and things that don't go to, yeah, organized play. Thanks.
Okay, yeah, please move quickly. And let's limit our questions here and be very succinct in our questions.
Here we go. Number nine, teen engagement. Any questions there? Nope, okay. Number 10, mental health initiative for all ages. Questions?
Well, I think this is a great idea.
Okay. Number 11, this is implement a program called Zonar, which would allow us to do some modeling, three-dimensional modeling of zoning information. Any questions?
No idea what that is, so... Yeah, maybe we take it offline then.
Okay. And then number 12, develop Cupertino marketing program. Questions?
Who would be... Oh, sorry, go ahead.
All right, go ahead.
Who would be leading this effort from within our staff?
This would probably be Public Affairs. I mean, I think there'd be a lot of collaboration on that, but Public Affairs would be leading the effort.
Is there a generally envisioned budget for this at this point?
Not at this point. So that, I mean, what this exercise today prioritized that, we would roll it into the work program. After the work program's adopted is when we'll come back with, you know, what the budget would be. We'd probably have some idea of that with the work program as well.
Okay, so we don't know who's gonna be heading it, and we don't know how much it's gonna cost. I think we probably need a little bit more substantiation in terms of the details of what we're looking at. I mean, because this kind of often happens. We get a vague description, and then all of a sudden... Well, actually, sometimes we get a specific description, and we go far afield of that. But, I mean, this, you know, I think it's a great idea. But, I mean, who are you gonna work with? Who's gonna lead it? I mean, is it gonna be $50,000? Is it a half-million-dollar effort? I mean, you know, what are we talking about here? Are we talking about the city logo? I mean, is it, you know, this could be really pretty far-reaching.
Yeah, I would agree with Darcy, believe it or not. And, you know, I think when I look at our efforts at getting our message out, the comments that my fellow council members have expressed earlier are not getting our messaging out about what we've done on things like housing, what we're trying to do on transportation. I would consider that much higher priority than pushing our branding, quite frankly. If we were gonna push our branding, I would think it much lower priority, given, you know, same set of resources than I'm expecting. And frankly, before we do any more branding, I would like to see the city consider adopting a different logo. I do not think the Morion represents the city of Cupertino very well in 2019. Thank you.
A really quick comment on that. You know, I think you have majority support from council on that. I think, I don't know what the Morion is all about. I don't know what the symbology means to some people. I think there are some within our staff that really like it. I don't know why. I will say that when we went to Toyacawha, that they actually have a huge statue of a Morion that's larger than the one on Torrey and Rodriguez outside of our city hall. But, yeah, I mean, you know, Rod, actually, you and I agree on a lot of things. Maybe there are just different types of interactions at play. But with regard to, you know, this item, I mean, I was just thinking about it this morning. It's branded everywhere, frankly. I'm a bit indifferent to it, but, yeah. I mean, there are a lot of undertones of having a conquistador helmet as your logo that, you know, may not be the best messaging to set forth. Or maybe it is. I don't know. It probably warrants a bit of a public discussion.
So for this item, it seems there are three sub-items. One is community engagement. That's covered under another item. And another is branding, which is actually an item of last year's work program, right? There was an item about branding and logo. I don't know what's the progress on that. I think one thing we do need is, there is... When people visit Cupertino, we don't have something of significance that shows its Cupertino value to show them. A mark or some kind of... There is, or maybe an art by all the utility box. We don't have some things that represent Cupertino to give our guests or even residents can buy, and maybe Cupertino t-shirts. So this is... So this is what I was thinking about this. And then the third item, which I think should be separate, is here, public relations campaign to enhance Cupertino image. The reason it's important is because Apple is here, which makes us famous. However, that also makes us a target. We are being targeted by the region, by the legislators, as... With incorrect statement. There are, some people are blaming us for not building enough housing when we have actually approved more than our arena allocation. But that message is not out there. So we need a better campaign that present Cupertino as a city that's responsible. We do our best to try to accommodate people, and I think previous council has already approved many good projects. And Volco is not, is just one of the many projects. And the residents in Cupertino did not object to the other housing projects.
Okay, thank you, I smear.
Okay. Next, so I think that we may be reshaping some of these as they come back to the work program discussion. So thank you for your comments. Number 13, council member webpages and outreach. Any questions?
No, I think... Oh.
So I've been thinking about this and looked at the various proposals, what we've done in the past, what's customary in other cities. And I'm gonna make the following proposal as to structure. I think, you know, this is the first place that a lot of folks in the city look to, as, you know, as John has made the point, right? To try to see, okay, politics and, you know, more detailed stuff, we may all have our own campaign websites for. But in terms of, you know, what brought us here and what are we doing and so forth, I'd propose this structure, and I'll see what my colleagues have to say. this structure, and I'll see what my colleagues have to say. It's, it builds on the draft bill that you sent. But in terms of the structural elements, yeah, I think it's appropriate to provide when elected and re-elected, secondly, and I can send this list to you later, but when the current term ends, past tenure as a mayor or vice mayor is applicable, and then contact info. So just, just as we're seeing Mayor Scharf's mock-up, how, how do I get in touch with this person? That one sentence that says, what are our key interests, right? Just one sentence. What are the top-level things that basically voters appreciated, or in your mind, right, about why you, why you're here? Education, certainly, and then in the next section, I think it would be appropriate to have a very short, maybe it's three-line bio. What, what's your background, right? Where did you come from? For Vice Mayor Chow, I would expect her to want to say, look, I, I served on the school board, right, prior to this. So I had an interest in education. For me, maybe it was my business background or something, right? So what I'd done previously. So that would be something that's not in here, but it is traditionally in bios that I see for electeds. And then, yes, the, the current assignments in the city and the region, and I would add a section that follows on any, likewise, any significant past assignments. So that's what I'd recommend here as, as a way to get consistency between our, our things. And if we really need to have our pictures up there, okay. No, I, yeah, picture, sure, it's appropriate.
I'd like to, to add, though, that I, I would see this as being something that's more real-time, so that the residents truly know what, what we really have been and are doing. If you take like the Goodyear Hotel that came up, I'd like a real-time such that it be a statement on my webpage saying, voted for or against the Goodyear Hotel, voted against it, and then a link, and you can quickly read what were the criteria that I used. You know, yeah, information just in general is good, but real-time, the things that are going to come to the council, things that I would be interested in, in knowing upfront, things like that, so that the residents can then weigh in and say, hey, here's some considerations that aren't on your list, but you should really consider these things. So real-time on events today that, that we would be working on or considering.
So one component of this is outreach. I hope that council members will have, be more in touch with the community during the four-year term that they are in office. So maybe have council members to go to each individual parks to meet with residents, or even, even have walk tours of different neighborhood park. That way, we can see firsthand what walking in Cupertino is like, and encourage more walking, even bike tours of Cupertino with council members.
I mean, again, you know, if you have a capable public affairs office, I mean, this should just be done at a staff level, honestly. I mean, I don't, I don't know if we need to spend public time on, you know, getting, getting this outreach. I mean, great, let's meet with council member of parks, let's define some of our priorities and assignments, but that, that information should be out there already. I mean, so, so, yeah, I mean, that, that's, yeah, thanks.
Thank you. I, I would just say that I, if, if we went to something like what, what Councilmember Willie's saying here, I think it is a resource issue and a work program item, so I think that's, that's really the question. I would, I would agree with you if, if we are just kind of cleaning up some of the assignments and, you know, maybe a bio statement. But if we're having a live thing, then it would be somewhat different. Okay? Next, number 14, green building code, local amendments. 15, participate in regional electrification building reach code effort. 16, climate adaptation plan. 17, climate action plan 2.0. Roll them right around.
Don't we already have this in our current work program also? The climate action plan?
Is the, the revision, so I guess, we can, we can look at that. Yeah, I mean, we, we don't want to be redundant, so I mean, that's a good point. Thank you. Number 18, proactive legislative support.
Right, this, I think we kind of discussed this earlier, but...
Correct. I think this could roll into the commission ideas regarding the Legislative Action Committee.
Correct, all right.
Okay, number 19, public safety support. Number 20, traffic calming and enforcement.
So this is one of my pet peeves, so we can't always have the sheriffs out there giving tickets. We don't have enough deputies to actually do as much enforcement as we need. We really need to look into traffic calming solutions, look at other cities, what they're doing, and figure out ways that we can prevent it even being possible to do some of the bad behavior that we're seeing. I was out yesterday by Monte Vista, by Kennedy Middle. The sheriff wrote 30 tickets on Thursday, I'm not sure how many on Friday, and if he had more officers, he probably could have written 200 tickets. It's just unbelievable. And he said, we're going to do a 30-day enforcement, but it's not going to, you know, it's just, you've got to make changes to the actual physical infrastructure to prevent this.
Yeah, I agree. Ticketing our residents is very annoying to the residents, and then it's only a temporary solution. People will repeat the same behavior when the police is not there. I think this would be an ideal item under the new traffic commission to take on, to look at the different things we can implement. So something I would like to see maybe possibly is perhaps within a block of schools during the drop-off hours is maybe ask all the bicyclists to walk their bike and, on the sidewalk. Maybe that's even safer than just riding bicycle on the road. And then, then we do need, I would like to explore the possibility of maybe have a car-free zone near school during drop-off hour, so that there is a wider area of drop-off and most students walk the last block to schools.
Yeah, I mean, in addition to increasing the misery on people and squeezing them, I mean, I think we should add traffic calming enforcement and alleviation. And in that regard, I'd say, talk about a shuttle, you know. There was a suggestion about implementing a shuttle to and from the library to a couple of different points, the tri-school Monte Vista area, as well as the Cupertino High areas, I think are really prime points, especially during those busy hours after school. So I, I would add the shuttle system into here. I think it's going to be much more difficult to implement with regard to the school areas, but it's something that could actually help alleviate some of the congestion around there. I mean, things like increasing the enforcement. I mean, the reason that people are doing this, you know, they, they're driving around is that there just isn't enough space and the congestion's high. I mean, yes, you're going to get a little bit more discipline, but it's not going to solve your core problem here, you know, when you, when you deal with these kinds of, you know, like, let's beat our, you know, residents with, you know, more discipline. So, so something that goes along the lines of helping to, to solve the problem would be good in this item as well.
And I will add, I will add that, oh, I'm sorry, John. Oh, you know, we have spent a lot of time and effort on this over the past few years, and I might suggest we, to Mayor Scharf's point, maybe we need more enforcement, maybe we need more training for the kids that are biking to school, that jet out on crosswalks and sidewalks. Maybe we do need to look at car-free zones around schools. All these would be big impacts, but maybe a starting point would be a study session with our Safe Routs to School Coordinator, right, that we have, Sherry Wachowiak, and the Bike Ped Commission that's been taking the lead on these issues. Maybe we ought to have a joint study session or something to, to see how we could do better. Because, yeah, the, the basic thing is, parents are going to continue to drive until we have safe alternatives that the parents and the kids are comfortable with to get to school on foot or by bike. And so maybe we need a revisit of how we doing on, on getting people out of cars. Thanks.
The comment I'd like to make, I, I agree with Councilman Chow that we really don't want to be just ticketing the residents, and so the focus should really be on the issues that are causing the problem. Not enough drop-off zone. I mean, when, when there's too many cars, kids are trying to get out of them, that's when the bad habits start coming into play. People jumping out of the car door and they're not over against the curb and stuff. So I'd really like to ask, you know, Public Works to kind of focus on how to make more drop-off area available help. And then number two, an ounce of prevention is a pound of cure. And while we don't want to be ticketing the residents, but if we were able to put up some cameras with signs saying, you know, area being monitored, so that the residents are aware, be on your good behavior in these areas, and then there would be less bad behavior. So, thank you.
On the item of cameras, I read a really good comment from email, and this related to the Huna Pariser Trail and having cameras along the trail. This is from a resident, and they stated that make sure that you're not encompassing private areas in your camera fields of vision. I think that's a great, great point. You know, irrespective of whether you're successful in doing that, we should probably have a bit of an outreach with regard to privacy as well. I mean, because it's a, it's a topic that warrants public discussion.
Sorry, regarding item 19, similar to camera, the, there was a request, the resident block leader, they would like to put private cameras on their, facing their neighborhood streets. So, but they don't know if that's allowed. So I hope that's considered together with item 19.
Number 21, establish code of ethics. So we're in process with that.
Right, yeah. So that should be coming back in a month or two, so I don't think we need to discuss that again.
Okay, number 22, engage with philanthropic organizations to find a way to build ELI housing units for developmentally disabled.
Right, so I touched in this in my state of the city and gave an example of Minneapolis-St. Paul. So we really need to start reaching out. Actually, one organization reached out to me yesterday, Rotary, with a proposal to use the land on Mary Avenue that they once proposed for senior housing. I'm not sure that's the greatest idea due to air quality, but it's something we, we can look into.
So I also met with Housing Choices and Silicon Valley Housing Trust. They provide financing for people to build additional ELI housing. So they are looking into piloting a program that through adding ADUs, so that we don't have to wait for, for big development project. That can be done individually by parents who already have children, maybe adult children that has disabilities.
I, I spoke recently with one of the representatives of this push, and, you know, I think it does warrant a little bit more education as well. I mean, if, if you're looking at a really large site potentially like the Valco space, and there are actually some units physically potentially available for, for, for this type of use, I mean, there are also, I think, some infrastructural questions that you could be asking in terms of, you know, what kinds of support mechanisms are needed, you know, how best to integrate, if you're going to integrate. I mean, it's, it's another form of inclusionary zoning, and the, the biggest factor for inclusionary zoning is that developers view it as a cost suck, right? I mean, it's something that, that costs them their bottom line dollars, and so, I mean, in addition to that, for, for ELI housing, I think we could really, you know, just kind of drill down with regard to, you know, what, what some of those tensions are in, in the inclusionary space as well.
One thing, the Housing Choices people propose is to have a forum, intercity forum, on how to house adults with mentally, that's mentally disabled, because they have special challenges. And the different, maybe the different nonprofits can give presentations, so that we can have more understanding of their needs and what options might be available for them.
Okay, thank you. Number 23, a fairly significant typo there. We're not looking at the possibility of building 608-town homes, it's six, six to eight-town homes. So...
Sorry, this is the property the city bought on Burn Avenue down the entrance to Blackberry Farm. They wanted a, an easement, so a pedestrian path could be put down there, but we have that house and that land, and we need to decide what to do with it. So one thought I had was a small number of ownership units, it's quite a big lot, and partner with an organization like Habitat for Humanity to, to build that kind of housing.
Okay.
So along similar line, I would like us to explore duplex and maybe fourplex in single-family zone lot. I have seen those well-designed, it looks still like single-family home, so that it has minimal impact on the neighborhood. Of course, parking might be something that we need to study, but I'm hoping to look into programs that, for, for future renovations that residents do, they can consider adding units.
Okay.
I, I greatly support this. I mean, I think it's something that we've started to overlook in the past several years, because of the fact that we have large projects that we're looking for the inclusionary aspect of it. But the fact of the matter is, if we're infilling on affordable housing units in some opportunity sites, then that could really significantly add up over the, the geography of our city. So, yeah, I, I mean, this could amount to 100 units over the course of the next 15 or 20 years.
So I'd be very, I appreciate Stephen's idea, and would like to see us build some housing for the likes of teachers, so the missing middle, you know, middle-income BMR.
Right, and that, the Habitat for Humanity housing is exactly that. It's not free. People think, oh, they give people free houses. No, it doesn't work like that at all.
And Liang's idea is good, too, in my view.
Okay.
And Silicon Valley Housing Trust, they do provide financing for, financing for middle-income BMR also.
Okay, thank you. Number 24, we've covered, turn to the bands. Number 25, work with similar cities to analyze financial impacts of the CASA compact.
Yeah, so I guess since my name is on this, I could speak a bit to this. We've talked about this at the end of council meetings, but for the benefit of the public, this is going to be a high priority this year. We have many at the county and state level who are very supportive. They don't think there's any other solution, so we might as well get on board with this thing. The good points that are made by city officials are being lost in, in the drive to support this. The city's efforts, including our own, in meeting a housing element, are being lost. Thanks and no small measure to the funding proposals. CASA is managing to really polarize the discussion that we really need to have on addressing housing. And I, I believe my colleagues are supportive of, you know, amping up the discussion. I know that some of the city managers in the region, Tim, some of the city managers in the region are collaborating on our response. So basically, the principles on which we think housing should be considered, and specifically things that we don't think are appropriate, such as extracting property tax funds from cities like ours. So I would hope that we would join this discussion and really accelerate responding to this. to this in an appropriate way. That doesn't deny that we have an issue, but says we, you know, here are some constructive solutions, along with other cities. And also, understanding, because it's confusing and maybe a little vague, talking to folks up at MTCA bag and finding out what this would really mean for the city, having Christina and the finance department go through the numbers and explain to us what this would mean. I think unless we have these very effective discussions, we're going to be left at the bus stop, and we're going to be left at the end of the road, and, oh, hello? And we're gonna, you know, we're gonna, we could be in a world of hurt. So I think we have to be more proactive. I made this request since this came up in early November, and think we really need to hop on understanding what these consequences are, and at the earliest time possible, bring this to council for a study session, so we can attempt to coordinate our response. If we don't have cogent arguments to make to state legislators, including, you know, ones in our local area here, I think the railroad, you know, the train, this freight train is moving and coming at us at a frightening speed. Thanks.
I mean, the lynchpin here is really, can someone do something about the sound, please? I mean, the lynchpin here is lack of our legislative action representative. And so, you know, I really appreciate Mayor Sharpe's pointing out that this is creating a massive jobs, housing imbalance, but no one's actually moving forward with that. And so, you know, at the end of this, you know, we set forth this as a policy, a very rational policy last year, and it really just seems like there are a lot of dollars floating around in terms of motivation to build just enormous amounts of office space and create some housing, but create a huge deficit of housing. So, I mean, this is a really simple message. The point is very compelling, and at the end of the day, if the power structure basically says, well, we're going to do it because we can, and it's going to get so bad and congested, then, yeah, obviously, after 15 or 20 years of misery, we're going to have to compel some transit that's actually semi-effective. But that's really, that's really backwards, right? I mean, you know, we should be looking at this from the totality, from the very beginning, and, you know, effectuating that kind of idea. We have no stake in this. We have no ability to have any impact on this conversation if we don't have a legislative person in there. So Supervisor Cortese was here at both of the speeches that Mayor Sharpe gave him Wednesday, and he was saying to a few of us, you know, if you want to get a task force, you have to move, you have to move really fast. But how are we going to move if we don't have a point person on staff that can actually help us coordinate this kind of activity? And we just, we don't have that at all right now. And so, from a legislative perspective, I mean, we're just going to be sitting here. I think, you know, we can kind of do our, you know, kind of ad hoc efforts, but at the end of the day, these financial provisions may go through, and we'll throw up our hands in the air and go, oh, well, there goes 20% of our property tax revenue.
So, yeah, I agree, we do need legislative lobby effort. However, we also, I would suggest that the city first do a study session on CASA compact, because majority of the public have no idea. However, there is a tremendous PR campaign to push this through the legislators. There are 10 elements. Financing funding is only one of them. What's damaging, what will be damaging for Cupertino are many other elements that will be damaging. The funding part, actually, I went to MTC presentation, I confronted them. They say they are going to raise $1.25 billion in order to fund all the affordable housing. Because, face it, everyone wants to build affordable housing, but there is no funding. Cities can afford to build all the affordable housing that the state requires us to build. Where is the funding? They said $1.5 billion will become, they have, they say there will be $1.5 billion funding source. However, most of it will be coming out of taxes by taxing every day residents, every one of them. And then at the end, the MTC admitted to me, there is no funding. The funding would all eventually have to be approved by voters, and they might or might not come through, and it's coming out of our pocket. Without funding, that means there will be no affordable housing built, but then CASA compact will relax a lot of city regulations, so that developers get to build a lot of market-rate housing, a lot more office space, when we have very little affordable housing out of this. So, we can't just focus on funding, we also need to focus on the other elements of CASA compact that will hurt our city infrastructure.
Okay, very good. And, yeah, it should be pointed out, the CASA compact, look at who was on the committee, you can see what the stated goals were, were not, what the actual goals that they're trying to do are. Okay, so let's move on.
Okay, number 26, review policies on relationships with council commissioners and staff with various local nonprofit organizations. Questions?
First of all, is there anyone that can do anything about the sound system here? Oh, okay.
Okay, and then last is develop resident advisory program, and we talked about rolling that into number, where were we? One of the earlier number? Yeah, number four. So, that's the end of our list.
Okay, so what about council additions to this list? Did you note any as we went along?
Yeah, so we combined a few, we took one or two out. Anything else?
I have one more.
Okay, well, we got...
I think we need a focused effort on a continuing basis to talk about what we want for housing in the city. And so, we have a housing commission. I think we ought to be engaged with them. I mean, we had some resident input about, you know, what we want for sale, what we want as rental housing. We ought to have a conversation about what we think is appropriate in terms of market-rate housing, moderate-income housing, low and very low, the two state mandated categories, and then, yes, ELI. I think we ought to be having that discussion in the city about, you know, what we think is appropriate. And then, secondly, I think we have to focus on transit and what we can do regionally on transit. I don't see that on the list anywhere. We hired a full-time employee to help us with this, right, a year or so ago. And frankly, I've heard nothing yet about whether we're moving the ball forward on this, or whether things are foundering. And I realize we are only, we are but one player in this big game, but I think we have to think about, you know, do we have to go get a coalition of cities together as we did in 2016 to see how we move this ball forward? I think there are going to be, there's going to be a lot of work this year on the effort of, you know, folks regionally to come up, to compose measures for 2020. And rather than being reactive, I think we might want to be proactive in this discussion. We're having discussion about revenue measures, I mean, one was raised earlier, but there's a whole list of things that we need to get on with if we're serious about beginning to fix transportation here. And by that, I specifically mean transit. I haven't heard anything about what's come of Apple's letter, you know, at the end of July. Why not? Thanks.
Yeah, I agree that the city needs to have some kind of housing strategy. Hello? So, I agree, the city needs to have some kind of housing strategy, what percentage of for-sale rental, and how, what kind of housing we would like to provide into the future. The housing element that we have from the general plan, it wasn't, was not really comprehensive. And so, I think I would like to point out, one public member pointed out that we need to improve our approval process with accountability, paper trail, and oversight. This is essential, because there will be a lot of state bills that will force us to streamline projects, even ADUs that's coming down now. How, then if a staff member will approve this huge project, what's accountability? Who will provide the oversight? How do we know that everything is followed through? And so that, then we need to have a good process for that, so that the public, we can have the public's trust on our approval process, even when it's ministerial.
Okay, please finish up.
And another second is the homeless student, I like the idea that we, I don't know how many homeless students are there, or how many are originally from Cupertino, because I know the Anza draw a lot of students from other, out of district. But it's, I like the idea that we outreach to our residents to offer a room for rent for students. However, the, maybe the management of these rooms might be too much for some senior residents, maybe we can look into some solutions for that. And, sorry, the last item is, we do face a lot of times pressure from San Jose urban villages. What's coming up will be the Anza urban village, they will be going up. Then can we have some kind of agreement with our neighboring cities, so that we can get an agreement upfront within certain number of feet of Cupertino, they won't upzone to a certain level, so that at least there is a certain transition between cities. Yeah.
Okay, there are two things. One, on the legislative side of things, since we're, since we're onboarding a whole firm, okay, into City Hall, get them involved in the LAC type of issues, so we actually have some legal muscle and evaluation behind that. On the homelessness issue, make an audit of the city with regard to what are various nonprofits and, like West Valley Community Services, churches, what are they doing to help alleviate the homelessness issue? I know that there is one church that's allowing people to park in their parking lots. So, we need a comprehensive plan with regard to what's feasible and what is palatable to our residents as well. So, I think that is a real problem. There were some estimates with regard to how many people there are homeless in Cupertino. Maybe we need to fortify those estimates, because there was a comment that they weren't sure that it had increased that much in that amount of time. But anything that we can be doing to help alleviate that, because these are the people that are in the most extreme, you know, reaches of duress in our city at this point.
Okay, now I'll turn it over to Amy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to briefly review to make sure that what I heard is correctly, and get all of us on the same page, because it's going to help our ranking process just a minute later. So, on item number one, what I heard is that that item is already on the work plan, so we should remove it for ranking purposes. Item number one is the POP Master Plan. I also heard that number three, that Legislative Action Committee is an important focus, and there is actually an item on Legislative Committee or sort of related, and if council is okay, we can fold that into item number 18. You see, item number 18 is the proactive legislative support, okay?
We'll include item number 18 into item number three.
Yeah, number, they did LAC, only the LAC component, fold that into...
Fold CASA.
No, 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 not CASA. Number 18 is not, CASA is a different one, isn't it?
Right.
It's 25. No, no, don't, I'm suggesting folding the comments under item number three on LAC into item number 18. Okay? The next one I have is on community engagement, there's suggestion on item 27, and item 13 to fold them into item four. All right? The next one I have is item six, there's suggestion to pull out the library item as a separate item to rank. That's library expansion item. The next one I have is the Cupertino image, item number 12, to put that in as a new item. Stop me, I'm going fast, given the time. Number 13, we already talked about, that it'll be folding into...
Yeah, I don't think we're going to do the image thing.
That's image and original.
Okay, and maybe we can get these on the screen, because I don't think we can remember everything. Can someone type these in?
Number, the next one I have is number 21, is the code of ethics. We're going to, since it's going to be going back to council in March, we're going to remove it for ranking purposes right now on this one. And, and that's it. Plus, that the council just added a few more items. The housing one, that council member Singh talked about earlier in the discussion on item number two, Vice Mayor has suggested to look at rental and ownership. Are you okay to put that in, as, fold it in as number two, or you want that as a separate item?
I can't hear you.
So, it's a separate item, as a rental versus ownership, council member Singh's item.
I think it was, it was a housing, having a housing strategy?
Yes, it's the housing strategies. So, housing strategies.
It's strategy with regard to, you know, what's our strategy at market rate, moderate BMR, low, very low, which we know we need to meet for RENA, and then extra low. What's, in other words, trying to expand Stevens' first thing about ELI across the strata, and yes, if one aspect is rental versus ownership, that's one thing, but I think it's important to talk about economic levels.
So, it would be a new item.
So, for this, we'll call it housing strategy, but that'll encapsulate those.
Right, it will include all of them, so it'll be a new item to rank. The next one, yes?
Yeah, we really need to fix IT at our meetings. This is also a public issue as well. Members of the public should not have to come to us and be really confused as to how to put up slides or PowerPoints. Well, I mean, let's get that mechanism fixed. I mean, we have staffers that sometimes don't know how to use the computers to open up PowerPoints. I mean, this issue should not be happening, right? I mean, and again, when the mayor's giving, it wasn't even a PowerPoint, it was a PDF slide projection, and it took five minutes to fix that.
It was a PowerPoint.
I mean, that kind of stuff really needs to be fixed. I mean, this is, this is public image at the end of the day. And normally, it would be an internal staff thing, but if it's so repetitive over so long a time, and it's a relatively easy fix, then it needs to be made public, and we need to get that fixed. I mean, you know, from a council member's perspective, we should be able to put items, you know, from the dais up on the screen. I mean, I don't know why that would be so difficult to do, and we should have that mechanism at the lectern as well for our residents. If they simply have a thumb drive and are putting it in, give them the ability to, you know, show electronically. I mean, that's technology you could have done 15 years ago. I mean, that's something we should get implemented. So, sorry, sorry for the comment, but, I mean, it's very important in terms of the flow of our meetings.
Yeah, thank you. I definitely agree. We should have more microphones.
Okay, we have more microphones next time. Okay, the next item to add is transit and transit-related issues, i.e. Apple, that's a new item to rank. Another one is, I would call it development-related accountability actions, Vice Mayor suggestion. The next one is, Vice Mayor mentioned homeless students, but then I think someone, I forget which council member, talked about maybe a broader survey, maybe Councilmember Paul, talk about the survey of homeless issues, what are they doing, or things like that. So we can fold that in as one of the policies that study issue as a new item. And the last one I have is how to work with neighboring cities, such as the urban village issue. Okay? So, what all... So, with all of them, I have a net so far, net three to add, so right now you have 27, add three more will be 30 to rank. Mr. Mayor, it may be appropriate to open for public hearing, you can take a break now or later.
Yeah, let's take a three-minute break, and then come back, we'll do public comment. I'm going to bring my own...
I mean, you said you should be a little hard stop at here, I'm not reading out.
So, we will go past noon, I asked, and we can continue. I will ask when we do public comment that we try to keep it short. Okay, we'll get started with public comment now. Okay, that will... So, I never like it, when I was in the audience, when the council cuts down the number of minutes, so it will still be three, but I just beg you to make it less than three. If there's several people saying the same thing, you can just have them stand up, say you agree with them. So, we'll get started now. The first speaker is Rajiv, I can't read his last name, Karas or Caress. Welcome, Rajiv. Okay, not here. Next is Jeff Paulson. Oh, where's Rajiv? Oh, okay, welcome, Rajiv, okay.
Good morning again. So, I'm here to talk about an obvious issue, that's called traffic. Now, I've been a resident of Cupertino for the last 19 years. Ever since, I've seen the traffic going from bad to worse. Have engaged with former council members to have some comments and solutions, and then I would, there are a lot of emails, and Tim was also involved in the email discussions and other stuff, but nothing has happened in this area. To Rod's point, writing ticket is not the solution. So, if you look at Faria School, right, there are 1,200 cars that have to pass through the school within 15 minutes. The reason is very simple, the Faria doesn't want anyone to come to school before 8:15. There are a lot of common sense solutions that the city can implement, without getting into spending a lot of money on unwanted things. And I was told that city spent $8 million to paint green paints on the road, you know? This is a classic example of how the city is wasting taxpayers' money, along with the dog park. So, I'm glad that some of the council members lost the election, I have nothing against them, because they had buried their head in sand, they never understood the residents' pain points when it comes to traffic. I'm glad to see their new faces on the council. I would love to work with you guys, there are common sense solutions that we can implement to improve the traffic. I repeat, writing tickets is not the solution. Thank you for John, for highlighting that point. And then, people who have no interest in serving the community goals and things, should not be sitting on the council. They got other things to do, they're welcome to go and do those things. But don't sit on the city council and say, writing tickets is the solution for these problems. It is not. No, nobody gets up in the, from the bed in the morning and says, I want to break the law today, right? And the traffic tickets that you write is all silly things. If half the residents go to courts, these traffic tickets will be thrown out. I've done it, and I don't mind doing it again, right? So, I appeal to the council members not to listen to voices that say, writing tickets is the solution. Please work with us, there are common sense solutions that we can implement. I strongly support Vice Mayor's idea of having a traffic commission. I would strongly urge her to lead that effort, any one council member should lead it, not give it to the staff members, because they don't understand the pain points of the residents, because none of them live in this area. I've done my research, it proves to me that none of them live in the Cupertino, although they all work in the, for the city of Cupertino. With that, I end my conversation, I would appreciate to, I would love to work with you guys to find some solutions, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next we have Jeff Paulson, followed by Bobby Trung, followed by Sukanthi. Okay, are any of these people here?
No.
Jeff's not here, how about Bobby Trung? Okay, you have three minutes.
Good morning, thank you. I believe my comments fall under item number two, because it's a proposed change to one of the zoning ordinances, and it's a suggestion to correct a defect that currently exists in the zoning ordinance, specifically in the definition of lot coverage. Under lot coverage, two definitions are provided. The first relates to, applies to single-family residential uses, and then the second definition applies to all other uses, which I will call non-single-family residential uses. And in the second definition, there is great ambiguity as to whether sheds count towards lot coverage. And in fact, if you read the two definitions together, there's a strong implication that sheds do not count towards lot coverage. But despite that, the official position of the city right now is that sheds do count towards lot coverage. And in talking to city staff, they acknowledge that the current verbiage is very ambiguous, and in fact, makes it very difficult for them to defend their position, from a logical standpoint, that sheds do count towards lot coverage. And so, just from my conversation with them, I think they would actually welcome the opportunity to make a change, to make this section of the code more clear. And while we're looking at that section of code, I would suggest that we also make a slight change to meet what I see as a significant need right now. Let me elaborate on that. So, for multi-family residential units, R3 zones, there's currently a 40% limit on lot coverage. And now, knowing this, developers of this type of property consume the entire 40%, you know, with buildings, whatever. So, by the time a property owner buys this type of property, there's no lot coverage left. And that's problematic, because, you know, just from personal experience, we own a fourplex. And so, in order to maintain the fourplex, we need some sort of storage shed for storing the items that we use to maintain the fourplex. And you just think about, you know, wheelbarrows, gardening tools, paints, lumber, tools, you know, just all sorts of things that you need, just think about the things that you need to maintain your house, and multiply that by four, because that's what we're dealing with. And so, right now, the code is structured in such a way that there's no accommodation for any type of storage sheds, because the 40% limit is already reached by the time we buy the property. And so, the small change that I would suggest is that we make a change to the definition of lot coverage to allow up to two storage sheds to be excluded from lot coverage, so long as each shed is no bigger than 120 square feet. And I choose 120 square feet is because, under current building code, any shed that's under 120 square feet or less, doesn't require a building permit. So, obviously, the city considers those to be relatively small structures that they don't worry about. And so, I think if we, in making this suggestion...
Okay, please finish up.
Okay, I was very mindful of a compromise, to allow people to have storage sheds, to store the things that they need, but also not have a lot be overly developed, so that's why I chose up to two storage sheds to be excluded. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next is Sukanthi, followed by Art Zimmerman. Is Art here? Okay, moving on. Samir Jain? Is Samir here? How about Swajitendra? Oh, what is your name?
Samir Rajja.
Oh, okay, welcome.
Hi, I wanted to touch base on the dog park issue once again, thank you for discussing it during your goal planning, and thanks for also raising the issue that it has been contentious in the past. We understand that, and we don't want to make it a contentious issue. We started by reaching out to opponents from the past who had objected, we wanted to make sure that we communicated with them, we want to make this a constructive process, and we want to work with the city on this. That's why we went through the Park and Rec Committee, we worked with the Parks and Rec Department, we showed what we were looking for, and we also want to make sure you understand that we're asking for a very limited request, a two-hour, one hour before sunset, one hour after sunset, off-leash trial in Jolliman Park. So, we want to make it a trial, and let the city decide whether it's successful or not before we move forward, but we do need the support of the council in order to make it a trial. So, I'll keep my comments brief, and looking forward to talking about this in the future. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Is Swajitendra here? No, moving on, Kalim, is Kalim here? No, Kalim? Janet Van Zor, and I think she said she was not going to speak today? Okay. Jennifer Griffin? Is Jennifer still here? Welcome, Jennifer.
Hi, I'm Jennifer Griffin. Boy, you guys ran this through in champion time, I commend the staff and the city council. Anyway, I will, I'll be really, really quick. I think one of our main issues that's coming up in the future, and you all talked about this, is the CASA compact, I called it the CASA Accord. I actually read it in depth, and it is frightening, it is staggering. We're bringing back redevelopment agencies, I'm not surprised, because I understand those go in and out depending on the political infrastructure, but it's like we're rehashing bills that didn't get passed, so why are we going there? CASA is frightening. I will say again, and I'm really glad that you put urban villages on the work plan, I live at the eastern end of Cupertino, and we live this and see this every day. The rise of the urban villages is, yes, it's coming out of San Jose, but it is presenting problems for our city, Santa Clara, Saratoga, other cities. Right now, I don't know if people are aware, there are four urban villages that affect Cupertino directly. There is a Stevens Creek Boulevard Urban Village, as you all are aware, there's a Lawrence Expressway and Bolinger Urban Village, that is on the eastern boundary of Rancho Rinconada in Cupertino. There's a Bolinger and Miller Urban Village, which means that the Safeway Shopping Center at Miller could go to 200 feet high. It's already zoned 10 stories, nobody knows that. There's also the South Deansa Boulevard Urban Village, and that means that if we're not careful, we're going to lose our view of the Saratoga Hills. That would be Saratoga, West San Jose, and Cupertino. We have to proceed cautiously. I commend San Jose for envisioning their future, but they need to be a partner with the adjacent cities, as we in Cupertino have the right to envision our own future. We, I will say again, Cupertino is not part of San Jose, it is a standalone sovereign city, and we have our rights to have our own vision of the future. And I would personally like to see Hamilton, Mount Hamilton, which I've seen my whole life, and I'd like to see the blue Saratoga Hills, and not have 200-foot signature projects from a San Jose Urban Village, from Stevens Creek Boulevard, or South Deansa Boulevard, obliterating it like they're going to obliterate the view from the Campanili in Berkeley...
Okay, thank you, you're out of time.
...with non-low-income housing. Thank you.
Okay, next is Dinesh Tekmansky, followed by Peggy Griffin. Again, we would appreciate it if you would be succinct. Welcome, Dinesh.
I wanted to speak on what constitutes and qualifies in, as parkland in our city, and I'd like to see tighter definitions on that. It seems like developers are getting a little too creative as to what suffices for parkland on these days, haven't tried to include planter boxes hanging from windows yet, but anyhow, I think that developers are using rooftop parks to create value added by utilizing dead rooftop space, and it frees up more land on the ground for income-producing development, but the city only captures a portion of that added value through taxes. I'd like to see a calculated fair percentage of what amount of green roof should actually count as parkland, since much of it is not conducive to traditional park uses. Furthermore, I think that there should be a firm square footage minimum to make sure that park space is useful, and maximum height limits for green roof location due to wind shearers, easier public accessibility, and police patrolling. Park median should not be counted, neither should traffic divider stops or other buffers counted as parkland, as they were. I think two tenths of an acre of a narrow buffer at Main Street was counted as parkland. If you can't sit on it, or next to it, and eat your lunch comfortably, then it probably shouldn't be counted as park space. I saw that San Hill had submitted a letter to the city about five weeks ago, claiming that the Wolf Crossing Bridge satisfies a portion of the parkland requirement, and I think that crossing bridges of any sort that are not contained within or connected to parkland at either end should not be counted as park space. I also don't think that park space should be scattered so piecemeal that it's nothing more than glorified landscaping and unusable. Additionally, it should be specified that the following does not qualify for parkland requirements, planter boxes on staircases that are not situated in the middle of a park space, planters on private patios or balconies, or vertical planter walls. Thank you.
Thank you, Dinesh. Next is, I have two cards from Peggy Griffin on two different things, so please consolidate it. Three-minute period.
I can do that quickly. The very short one is on school traffic. I'd like you to consider changing this maximum speed limit to 15 miles an hour around schools, as Sunnyvale did, traveling around the country. 15 miles an hour, if you speed, it is very noticeable. So, if you go 10 over that, that's 25, but if you go, if it starts at 25 and they go 35, you can really get hit hard. The other item is number two, general plan zoning. I'd like you to consider adding a policy to preserve all quasi-public land for the future, do not upzone it. This is land that has churches, utilities, schools. If this, if you don't allow upzoning, then those have to continue to be that kind of thing. And if you also add a strategy that the city has first option to buy, then those parcels all over the city, if they are for sale, could become parks, they could be senior centers, they could be a command center. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you, Peggy, thank you for being brief. Next is Rhoda Frye, followed by Siva, followed by Samir Rahija.
Do you answer my question there already?
Oh, okay, right, it was not 608 units, okay.
100 stories.
Siva.
Hi, my name is Sivak Endikota. I am here to support your items for the community engagement. Community engagement is the key, whether it is traffic, affordable housing, or community meetings like this one. Many of the residents are not even aware of this meeting, so we need to better communicate. I'm happy that, to see the city website has enhanced and to include, I was able to find this meeting right on the top of the page. It improves the transparency and communication to our citizens. As far as the community engagement is concerned, I would like to encourage you to use the block leaders to improve the communication. In a corporate world, we get so many emails from our corporate communications team, nobody looks at them. The only email that we look at is from our CEO, and our manager, or our colleagues. So, it's like getting emails from your colleagues or manager, if you get an email from our block leaders. So, another idea is that you need to present a cohesive one website, or one place to go for all the events and communication that you wanted to do. For example, you can put it in a city, state of the city that Steve did last week, he could have presented something like a... He could have presented something like a website or something that he can do it. No wonder many politicians present their website on their lectern. Of course, they want to collect funds, but in our case, we want to engage the community. So, I would like to encourage you to put your efforts on community engagement. Thank you.
Hey, thank you. Next, we have Harheev C. I'm not sure if he already spoke on the Park Master Plan. Is he here? Okay, guess not. Next is Connie Cunningham. Welcome, Connie.
I have two issues and I'll be really quick. The first one is on that traffic calming and enforcement, and council members thinks we refer to the July 31st agreement with Apple to help the city with transportation issues. I'm hoping that this would be one that would be fairly able to be addressed by that. So, just a comment about that. Number 22, which is the ELL housing, I wanted to let you know that I support that as an individual before I became a member of the Housing Commission, but just as a member of the community. I think it's particularly important because of the fact that it's very expensive and has very, very few ways to be funded. Okay, that's it. Thanks.
Wow, thank you for being brief. Next is Joan Chin. I think Ram Gopal already spoke, didn't he, on number eight? So, welcome, Joan.
Thank you again. I just want to emphasize the three things that stand out for me because they don't seem to stand out for a lot of other people that are coming up to speak, and it's our tendency to push these down the road again and again and again, and that are the Climate Adaptation Plan and the Climate Action Plan. I don't notice anywhere in these write-ups that you're going to be working with a Sustainability Commission, which, that should become under their bailiwick, I think. I don't think that they are necessarily ready to start making big plans for the whole city, but maybe they should be asked to start looking at that and not just sorting garbage at schools and things that are, that are important as educational steps, but also, we need to, the city needs to be so modern and so foresightful and so forward-thinking because we're already very late dealing with climate change in the country. I think we need to get our city on whatever list of the best cities in the country that we can get on regarding climate change. So, those two, I think those are two very important priorities. And the other one is the proactive legislative support. I think, again, it's hard to get regional action going. That's an easy one to punt down the road also, but it's so important because our traffic and housing problems cannot be solved by the city alone. So, my, those are my three priorities for you. Thank you.
Thank you, Joan. So, I think Ram Gopal didn't, I don't know if he's still here, but did you speak earlier on this?
Yeah, I'm going to talk about Jollyman Park.
Okay, welcome.
Yeah, I spoke earlier in the morning also. I know, I wanted to again reiterate about the Jollyman Park, you know, with questions to what the council member Rod Sinks raised, that it was a contentious issue in the year 2012. I know it was a contentious issue, but then this time, you know, we are requesting for off-leash dog park only, you know, as a trial basis, one hour before the sunset and one hour after the sunset. Hello? Yeah. So, you know, please look at it, look at our proposal, and then we have also followed the due diligence and we have, you know, this issue has been, we have been, you know, reaching out to the council through the Parks and Recreation, and then since, this has been going on since year 2012 December, sorry, 2017 December. So, we have gone through the Parks and Recreation and then we are also, you know, reaching out to the council. So, please look at it and then, you know, we will follow the rules and regulations as, as needed. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next is Robin Chong, followed by Lisa Warren, followed by Kitty Moore.
Thank you, guys. Thanks for all you do. It's a thankless job sometimes. I thank you. Just a couple of things. I am putting in the plug for the R3 zoning. This is basically the mom and pop, four-plex, mom, pop, and it's really important for us to have some sheds that we can go ahead and put our rakes and shovels and lawnmower and other tools in. So, I'd really, really hope that you're going to allow that for the R3 zoning. The other thing is, on your mission statement, just a suggestion, that, that you put in something about beautifying the area. One of the things that attracts people to communities is the beauty of the area, and that would be really wonderful. Another thing I'd like to put a plug in for is the dog park that was talked about. Just a couple of things about the dog park. It'd be nice if they had a breakdown of the sizes of the dogs. I think some of you have seen my little micro, less than five-pound dog. It'd be nice if you do do something like that, if you have a breakdown of the sizes of the dogs. Just another thing, too, just for education-wise, if a dog is socialized three months or before, then they are much more socialized to be with, with other dogs, and it's very important to keep up that socialization with other dogs. So, in order for them to be dog-friendly when, when you're walking by another dog in an area, so there aren't those, you know, those situations that happen. So, I'm putting in a plug for Jollyman Bark. Ha-ha. Okay, I put in a plug for the library expansion and requesting possible earlier hours and later hours of use, maybe 5:00 PM to midnight. Apartments, let's see, oh, it's, it's an owner's, pardon me, it's a part of the American dream to have a home, and we have so many apartments being built, I don't know if it's possible to have condos instead of apartments. Putting on the agenda for possible putting on fruit trees instead of just foliage and for a trial section, and then having community volunteering for harvesting the food and for those that are volunteering to harvest food and also for low-income persons. Bike paths, suggesting that bike, some bike paths in some areas be elevated for safety purposes. Of course, if we wanted to be absolutely awesome and be like totally the most wonderful place is to have a bike path that's way elevated. Urban villages problematic on the, on the borders. If we can somehow get our city to go ahead and to be able to talk to the other city and to, to let the people that live on the, on the perimeters know. Thanks so much.
Okay, thank you. Lisa Warren, followed by Kitty Moore.
Okay, number eight, field use policies.
Please speak into the microphone.
Go to the right. Number eight, field use policies. Just a quick note, as I understand it, the last time there was a field use policy drafted, it was 2004. That's where we had six days a week. Sunday's the only day, is a free day for residents. The, the need for spontaneous going to the park is vital, I believe. Rod Sinks brought that up. I think you need to be very, I do not recommend, basically, increasing, giving Sundays away also, and one of the reasons is the residency requirement for use of the fields can be, currently, as I understand, as low as 22% of a group that is renting a field, only 22% has to be residents, where you have real residents and increasing number of residents in fewer parks that, it just doesn't seem right. So, that needs to be revisited, I believe. I think the numbers, you know, in 15 years, there hasn't been a change in the fees for using the parks, and so, as I understand it, there was $160,000 in fees in the last period, which is a year long. I'm not sure when it began and ended, brought in, but there was $800,000 spent in maintenance. So, it's a loss to us to, to have the fee structure we currently have, if this is true, and please look it up. As far as technology goes, Councilmember Paul, I completely agree. Palo Alto is a good model, as I've seen it in running meetings. They have great tech available. I have never seen a glitch there. It's worth looking into what they do. It's not rocket science. It's nothing that special, but it's very useful what they do. They also have way better minutes. Let's see. As, as far as this sheds being gifted as extra square footage on a site and increasing the FAR, I have concerns about that. I realize now that the discussion was only on R3, but I think it pertains to everything. There's a reason we have floor area ratio percentages. They're good reasons. And to simply state that 220-square-foot sheds are fine on any lot in addition to the 40% FAR is a little worrisome, is a lot worrisome, because if you take a 5,000-square-foot lot that's 40% built out at 2,000 square feet of residential use and you add 240, you're bringing that almost, that 40% FAR almost to 50% for sheds. And there's also rules about setbacks for sheds that I hope are being followed because, just because it's a shed.
Okay, please finish up.
You want me to hand this back to you?
No, give that to the next speaker. Welcome, Kitty Moore.
This works? This one's working? Wow. Hi, I'm Kitty Moore, and I'm speaking only for myself. I just want to echo back things that I heard. You're talking about making changes to the general plan. You spoke about the vision statement and making some objective standard changes, and you also talked about the Cupertino Municipal Code, possibly adding the Legislative Action Committee. I'm not really sure about that. A traffic commission, making some changes to building code, and I'd like to suggest for housing types that you include co-living options when you're talking about different varieties. I want to mention that Measure B was cleared by the California Supreme Court, I think the week of January 23rd, and we just had two off-leash dogs walk by. There was no incident. I want to point that out. I am concerned about Sunday field use. I live near Creekside. Currently, about half of it is fenced off to let the fields rest, so if you take away Sunday use, we will have none, and I don't believe there is any lower residency limit for like a Priority Seven group. I know the 22% is, was an actual number, so I think it can actually go lower. And beautification was mentioned. When I look out back, we have a lot of open area which could be converted, making landscape decisions to butterfly bee and pollinator space, which would also tie into beautification. And I know some cities have like a beautification committee even, and I know, I won't accept a large planter as park space, but that can actually be used for butterfly and bee and pollinator space, kind of like what you see. Is that to let me know that three minutes is over?
No, no, you can continue.
I mean, you could have done it a different way. Okay, and then also for walkability, which I don't know if that was mentioned today. If we increase the tree canopy, some of our very, you know, bare concrete sidewalks that we have in the city could be a lot more comfortable. And we also do have a citrus grove at Stockelmeier, so there is a, an area where fruit trees do exist, and maybe that can be improved a little bit. I do want to mention also for moderate housing from our RENA in the general plan, it, projected need is 231. The low-income projected need is 207, and extremely low slash very low is 356, and I'm, just so that people have that in their minds. Thank you.
Oh, this one's on. This one is not on. Testing. That's all the public comment cards I have. Has anyone submitted one that didn't get, get to speak? So, okay, we can continue now. Amy? No, this doesn't work anymore. Testing, no. Testing, no. This one kind of works.
This one? Okay. All right. So, this is the time that I would suggest council members, if you have any, any new addition. Now, so far, we have 30 for, for you to rank, so if you have any new one to add, this is the time to do so.
That wasn't for you. Since our list doesn't have 30, can we get that on the screen, the list of 30?
Yeah, yeah. But I, I want to make sure that the public can see all 30 of them on the screen, and any council member have any new ideas, any new addition to add? So, you want me to just quickly go through each one of them to go through? Okay, take a look at what you have slowly, both for the council and for the audience.
Well, I mean, we really need to see all of them together.
Yes, they keep rolling.
And we don't have a list of all of them, but we don't, do we have a paper with all of them? Yeah, that would be wonderful.
You can, we were going to wait until you have any new addition to add.
Okay. I think we have enough.
You, you have a total of 30 to rank so far. So, any, any new one to add?
No, let's, let's move on.
Vice Mayor?
Sorry. You got 30 seconds.
One more item, vacant, possible vacancy tax for vacant units.
What, I can't hear you. Sorry.
It's a vacancy tax, like they have in Vancouver, if you buy a unit but don't rent it or occupy it.
Okay. So, 30 want to add? Anything else? Okay, that's it. We'll get them printed.
Two or three minutes.
Yes. We'll get them printed. It'll take about two to three minutes. So, I'm going to talk about the process while we are waiting. Okay? Now, what council member will get is a list of the items similar to here. I'm going to ask each of you, next to the number, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, et cetera, next to the number, put the ranking. You have one, you have 1 to 10 to rank. Your, number one is your highest priority. Number 10 is your lowest. Okay? Number one highest, number 10 is the lowest. Please do not put everything as number one. It, it would make the process that much of a challenge. Please also keep in mind that of your current year work plan program, as you heard from the interim city manager earlier, we'll come back to you with an update on the progress on the current year's work plan. Keep in mind that staff resources are limited, and they would need to complete the current year's program before they undertake the new one. So, when you look at each of the item, use judiciously your number one priority. So, again, highest ranking is number one, lowest ranking is number 10. After that, I'll collect the paper, staff will tabulate your ranking, okay? We're going to use that time to do an exercise with council members, so you guys are not done with your work. The audience, while you're doing the ranking and while you're doing the exercise, they do have a break. All right? So, any questions so far? Yes, yes. Councilmember Sinks?
So, I'm kind of wondering, I mean, we're doing these new ones just in isolation. Can you, can you talk about, are we, are we just, for today, trying to prioritize the new ones and then merge them and then reprioritize? Because there are plenty on the old list that I think deserve a hearing.
So, so if I may chime in, Tim. So on your current one-
Yeah.
Remember, your current one is for this fiscal year. So right now is early February, you still have four more months. So staff will provide an update to the council in terms of progress report on your current work program.
Well, a lot of the items, a lot of the items are not scheduled to complete this fiscal year, so that's my point. How do we, how do we get them in this list?
I'm getting to-
Thank you.
-your point.
Okay.
So your new one will theoretically will start on the, on July 1st. As you pointed, mentioned that the current one is still, some of them may not be completed by end of June, and which means that staff will look at that as part of their resource availability to undertake your new one. But as soon as resources available, they will take your number one priorities. So that's the reason I'm asking you to please be judicious in terms of how many number one, truly number one priorities you have. Tim?
Yeah, that's absolutely correct. So we'll, we'll be able to do a sort on these priorities by department so that we can start applying, you know, looking at what available resources we have on the current items and on the new items. And then when we come forward on the 19th, you'll have the opportunity and say, well, we kind of want one of these new items more than one of the old items. So there'll be another, another shot at this.
So, it's almost 1 o'clock. I kind of have another thing, I need to go. And there are 30 items. Can we continue this in the next meeting? The ranking? And we don't have the list even to rank. My number-
Which we will have.
I only have the old list, which is different from your new list.
No, yes, staff is printing out the new one for you, with the 31 items for you to rank, in few minutes.
How long, how long we expect this to take?
The ranking?
No, the printing. How long do we get?
A couple minutes?
The ranking too, I have another thing.
It's printing right now, so.
I guess I need to leave at 1:30, 1:45, 1:30 is the latest, yeah.
Oh, I think we should be able to rank it in just a few minutes, once we get the papers.
Yes, I think, I think Bill is picking up the paper right now, and if you can just take a look at the 31 items and rank them from 1 to 10, 1 being your highest priority, 10 meaning, means the lowest. Now remember, even the lowest one, you can always come back next year. This is the annual process.
It's not just that. Some of these items are major, and some may be lower priority, but they will, would only take, you know, 10 minutes to decide whether to do it or not. I mean-
Some of the policy items will take staff time to do analysis.
Right, but some of them will take very little.
Some of them may not take that long, some of them will take a long time, so it'll be helpful for you to provide your direction to staff, so that they can take a look at resource available, and then come back to you on March 19th, right? So you'll have a chance to take a look at it, and at that time, you may want to, when you look at the availability of staff resource, you may or may not want to change the priority. So this is not finalized, if you will. You have one more shot at it on March 19th. And as Tim was saying earlier, even on the current program, some of, some of the ones that slated to complete this year, depending on how much staff resource have already put in there, but if not much, you may want to push-
So I'd love to, for next year, I love that we have a lot more public engagement now in the process. It used to be a meeting that hardly anyone would attend. However, as a result, we didn't have time to fully discuss the items, and now we are being rushed through this very important process. So another city I've heard is, they have two meetings. The first meeting maybe the, the first meeting is like Friday night, public can talk about as long as they want, and then on Saturday morning, the council will have a full three hours to discuss the goal per hour, I said.
Good input. Other cities take all day in this exercise. Actually, we, when we were planning on this, we talked about more than, in early afternoon to complete. So certainly, thank you for the comments. We'll take those into consideration.
Just to clarify, when we do all this ranking, the staff can really kind of put up?
Real time, yes.
Is the staff going to take our numbers, or we're going to give that verbally?
No. So what, what we'll do is that the sheet's coming back to you, Bill, you can pass it out. We'll have that up on the screen.
So you want us to scribble a number from one to 10?
Yes, once you can, and our staff will incorporate your score, so you'll not only see the individual ranking, but the total.
Are you requesting that we score each one, or are we going to have a strong feeling with it?
No, 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 we score every one of them. They all are recorded.
1, 10.
1 is high.
10 is?
10 is low.
Got it.
Okay? You have three minutes to rank. I'm kidding. All right, no talking, please. Tim, excuse me, that the library is a new one behind. That's how we came up with 31. Councilmember Paul said the library extension is not shown somewhere.
That's in the current work program. That's in the existing work program.
The library extension?
I don't know. It's in the current one.
In the current, in the current one, it is, it's shown as on hold, but it also rolled this into the new CIP for this year. So, so, I mean, it, what we could do is revise the current one, where it says on hold, take it off hold, and then, and we'll propose it that way. So it's really in there, we're just going to change the status to current. We're going to take, right now, this work plan, it says on hold. We will take it off hold and continue to move that forward as a, it is a separate item. And then we would also roll that in as a proposed item in the CIP.
If that's still the council desire to rank as number one, on your current work plan, you have it on hold, and on the 19th, you can still decide who hold.
Oh, we're talking about the current fiscal year. The current fiscal year shows the, the library as a separate item in the, in the work program that it says on hold. So what would we come back with on March 19th is to take, is changing that status to take it to hold off of that. But we don't have a mechanism for ranking that in this, this- We would, we would show that as a continuing item, so it would, we will propose it as something that we will put staff resources to, but on the 19th, you'll see that. Right. We would propose it as something that we would include staff resources on on March 19th, and then you can decide if you want to continue it or not, but we would propose it. So, so how does that, how does that fit in with the current exercise of work? Well, similar to, we will continue the Parks Master Plan, so that will show up on March 19th as a continuing item. The, the library expansion will show up as a continuing item, that will no longer have a hold on it. Okay, I just don't see the purpose of the exercise we're doing right now for the moving items off, that we, that we discussed. Well, I'm going to say that, that item is actually already captured in our current work program. We're just going to change the, the status of it to take it off hold. Okay, is everybody done?
So, I think, I thought I suggested the public relations can get for to enhance the Latino image for the region, our regional image. That, I suggested that be a separate item, right? Because it's different from the branding of the Latino. This is more-
So having, having a separate item called Cupertino image?
Because this is not marketing, it's a perception of Cupertino from the public media by the legislators. There are incorrect information being presented in the media about Cupertino. So we need to get in front of that, present proper correct information about Cupertino in terms of our council vote in open budget.
Vice Mayor, if I remember, the comment is included in item number 12, it's the Cupertino, the last sentence, Cupertino image for residents and region. That's a new item.
Number 12? Item 12. You had, you had mentioned that as a separate item when you, in your discussion earlier. You see item 12? My item 12?
Item 12 is council webpages. This is a new list.
No, no, don't look at the new list. Look at the old one.
Why, am I, am I reading? Yeah, that should be a separate item. But then the new list, they didn't have the separate item. We're ranking it in the new list, right?
Yeah, so now it's number 11. Number 11.
That was, that would happen Main Street, where they say one thing and they build something different with the, with staff.
Okay, yeah, so it should be a separate item. Oh, okay. Who's Spanish? Do you have?
You know, some of the, some of the ones that were merged are still a separate item, so we just rank those again, and we can still merge them. So, are you going to rank, are you going to tabulate those now while we're waiting here, or what?
Yes, I, I am waiting, and those are the guys that are still there.
Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Ector.
No, we'll add them up and divide by five. Well, I'm not sure how they're doing it.
Mike, I'm reading from you.
They will. Exactly right.
Exactly right, that's the whole issue. No, no, not, not. Oh, you mean, so, I think 10 items.
No. You rank every item 1 to 10.
That's the thing, what I consider as my rating, because I don't want to confuse you.
Exactly. It will be completely different.
What are you doing?
I'm putting up my paper.
Oh, okay.
There's some sodas and stuff in there.
Did you finish this? Okay, is everyone done?
Oh.
Well, still, still waiting for the Vice Mayor. I'll put, I'll get the timer. My timer. Okay, are you done? Can you use a microphone? If we can find one that works. Testing one, this one worked.
Okay, now that council member finished your ranking, thank you. The next set of exercises I'd like for you guys to do is called Council Team Building. I actually have two slides on, in the computer, but then we're using it now, so you can. I'm going to have to use my phone to, to read you what I, we had it on the computer, but I have to find it now. So, do you have what I had?
Yeah, I just want to clarify, the items, I mean-
Twenty. The co-attending has been removed too. The co-attending's been removed too. No, they, they should be removed. Yeah, actually they give a two. Yes, so, yes.
Yeah. Number one.
Yes.
Please. Okay. Spread it out. Yeah. So...
It is.
Oh, yeah. Yeah. So... That's right. That's right. Well, that's good. Well, that's good. Well, that's good. Yeah. I should put it to the ground. It's... Um... Yeah. So having a separate item called Cupertino Image.
Uh huh. Because this is not marketing. It's a perception of Cupertino from the public media by the legislators. There are incorrect information being presented in the media about Cupertino. So we need to get in front of that, present tougher, correct information about Cupertino in terms of our housing goal, you know, for the project. Vice Mayor, if I, I remember the comment is included in item number 12. It's the Cupertino, the last sentence, Cupertino image for residents and region. That's a new item.
Number 12?
Item 12. You had, you had mentioned that as a separate item when you, in your discussion earlier. You see item 12? My item 12?
Item 12 is council webpages. This is a new list. No, no. The, the one...
Get the difference between...
Yes.
Oh, because there are ranking, I mean, a rating. Yeah, yeah. So they rated it.
Just one. Twenty. The co-attending has been removed too. The co-attending's been removed too. No, they, they should be removed. Yeah, actually they give a two. Yes, so, yes. Yes, so, yes.
Yeah. Yeah. So... 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 Yeah. So...
So let's hide it. This is what the number was on the list. Maybe we can...
Says we're fine if you're at the fifth. That's funny, fantastic.
This ranking doesn't make sense because I thought everything was right. Like I said, I don't know. But then there is... But it's not like a mind.
Right, your mind.
But his mind, his mind might be similar to my eight.
Yes, that's right. So, so, yes, it is. It's the aggregate. It should be really like ranking of the... It's taken two years. It's taken two years. Then I would wait for... What is it? Yes, yes.
Almost, almost.
Oh, no, time.
Testing.
All right, council members. Thank you very much for completing your impression of each other. So you don't have, what I'm gonna ask you to do is up to you whether you want to say anything or not. Take a look at the comments. This is all about you guys working together, how you can work together better. So your comments, do not read every single comment. If you have an impression, overall impression, please share. Any surprises, any helpful hints, et cetera. Again, you don't have to comment. This is for your own use, for your use only. And so I'm gonna ask whoever finished reading to see if any volunteer to make any comments or not. We are printing the score sheets right now. So we're using this time to just do the team building exercise. Let me apologize to you, council members, and also to the public audience. The technology doesn't work as well as we hope to do today. This is our first trial on doing this priority ranking process here. Next year will be much better, I promise, if we're gonna use this same methodology. So what you'll see on the screen is this one is part in priority order. And you'll see the number to your left. Oh, do you, okay, the item number. Where's the item number? You change, okay, item number is to the left. And then on the second column is your priority ranking and the title. And the department is responsible and also the total scores. Remember, the lower score is the highest priority. We'll get copies for the audience. We have been printed right now, as well as for council members. So apologize again for the delay, but you can take a look at this list. So can you guys all see? You'll get hot copies very, very quickly. Your number one priority is to review the general plan, the zoning ordinance. The number two is work with nearby similar cities to analyze financial impact of CASA impact, compact, and community engagement following that. Housing strategies after that. And number five is develop funding strategies to improve major projects identified as priorities in completed master plans. Number six, develop Cupertino marketing program. Number seven, council member webpages and outreach. Number eight, commissions and committees. This is the one that the council engaged with HF, HF to build ownership housing at our current site. Number nine, Burt Avenue, modernize business tax and analyze potential.
Okay, I think now that we all have the paper, we don't have to read them all out loud. We can just look at them.
This is some of all your efforts. So you'll see staff will come back again in early March 19. I'm gonna turn the mic back to Tim.
Okay, so yeah, what we have now is we have the ranking that you've provided with all your cumulative scores. And then you'll see the department that would be assigned to that work effort as well. So what we will do now is we'll take this information, go back, roll that in, you know, start analyzing what type of resources that we feel will apply to these, and then fold those into the current work program, the things that will be ongoing into next year. And then come back with the proposal or the draft work program on March 19. March 19th is more of a study session where we're getting your feedback on how we folded all that in, how we've applied the resources through all the departments. And then there'll be a final session for the work program where you'll approve it. So the March 19th will be a study session. And then I believe it's two weeks later that we will be actually approving that work program. So if there's no questions, I think that kind of wraps up where this effort would take us.
Great, no more questions, so I guess we can adjourn. If I don't have a gavel, I'll bang this microphone on the table. Since it doesn't work anyway.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.